Sam is gonna be delayed, so I'm gonna get the meetings started again. And Tony, can we have a roll call, please?
Jimenez.
Present.
Peralas.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Oh.
Roscoe.
Jimenez.
Here.
Arza.
Here.
Reynus.
Here.
Foley.
Here.
Mayhan.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
And Liccardo is absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Tony. So we're gonna go straight to item 10.5. But I have a list of the hands that have been raised. Matt, Dave, David, Sylvia, and Pam. So I have a, I wrote down your names to speak when we get back to item 6.1. So we're gonna go to, again, item 10.5, and staff has a presentation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jones. Rosalyn Huey, Director of the Department of Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement. And I will pull up the presentation now. So the item before the council this evening is a general plan amendment proposed by the Cambrian School District. The site is located along Cambriana Drive east of Union Avenue. The entire school district's site is actually about 9.6 acres in size. However, the portion of the site for the general plan amendment is 2.7 acres. So this slide shows on the left the existing land use designation of public quasi-public. And the aerial on the right shows the proposed general plan land use of residential neighborhood. A community meeting for the proposed general plan amendment was conducted on September 10th of last year. At that time, residents brought up support for undefunded schools and the need for school districts to generate revenue for their educational programs and to support our students. There were concerns raised about traffic and parking and impacts of future construction and impacts to existing infrastructure. I do want to note that planning staff has received many, many letters of support for the project, particularly in the recent days. So just wanted to acknowledge that as well. And in addition, the school district has on its own conducted lots of community engagement, several individual meetings with the community. So the Planning Commission at this meeting on December 9th considered the general plan amendment. They supported staff recommendation of denial and recommended that the city council deny the proposed general plan amendment. They also wanted to get some clarification on clarity of state laws as it relates to conversions of school district land for other uses. And I will note that our city attorney's office has coordinated with the school district attorney and gotten answers to those questions. So staff issued a supplemental memorandum yesterday to provide additional information on our progress in developing a draft PQP conversion policy for future council consideration. And we also provided a policy alternative for the council's consideration of the Cambrian School District General Plan Amendment. The city has recognized the school district's increasing need to generate revenue and support their students. And given the existing general plan policy to preserve the city's limited PQP lands, the draft policy includes criteria by which the city council could consider general plan amendments from school districts. The main goal of the policy is to produce deed-restricted, affordable housing to address the city's challenge in achieving its affordable housing goals and meeting its regional housing needs allocation, particularly for affordable housing. We think it's also important to establish a minimum density level for land conversions. Recognizing that most school district land is actually located in traditional, single-family neighborhoods, we suggest a duplex or townhome housing type that would be a compatible form to existing, single-family homes. Staff is also suggesting using the state's resource area mapping, which is the concept that encourages lower affordability levels in moderate or high-resource areas that have good schools, higher income and educational levels, access to good jobs, and have high-quality community services and amenities. In low-resource areas, higher affordability levels are encouraged to achieve more mixed-income housing. The draft policy also allows teacher and staff housing, as well as commercial and other employment uses in appropriate areas such as along commercial corridors or major thoroughfares. The draft policy considers future needs for school facilities, and we know that school districts are closely tracking enrollment data and accessing facility needs in the future. The draft policy provides council assurance of the project that would be developed in consideration of a general plan amendment. So we are suggesting that the required entitlement applications are submitted along with the general plan amendment. Alternatively, a school district could opt to enter into a development agreement with the city that would outline the parameters of a future project. Staff has initiated outreach to the various school districts. We are conducting meetings with individual districts as well as group meetings, and we have coordinated with the county superintendent. Just yesterday, we held a meeting where about 30 people participated, and we have two more meetings scheduled for February 25th and March 3rd. While staff and the planning commission recommendation is for denial of the proposed general plan amendment, staff provided an alternative in our supplemental memo for city council consideration. This would direct staff to complete the PQP conversion policy and return to council by June of this year. And also directs staff to work with this Cambrian School District to revise its current general plan amendment application, changing the land use designation to one that would comply with the PQP conversion policy after council adoption. Staff would also complete the additional environmental analysis that would be required, and then be directed to bring the revised general plan amendment to council for its consideration. Lastly, I just want to acknowledge the two council memoranda that have been issued. One from council members Foley, Jimenez, Peralas, and Asparza to approve the proposed general plan amendment with direction to work with the future developer on affordability levels and including accessory dwelling units. It also directs staff to continue exploration of the PQP conversion policy. Also, a memorandum from Councilmember Cohen was issued today, concurring with the Foley, Jimenez, Peralas, Asparza memo, and ensuring that future school district general plan amendments are not delayed due to implementation of a PQP conversion policy. And that concludes staff's presentation. I know that Dr. Andrews and her team are on the call to provide a presentation as well.
Thank you, Rosalyn. So Dr. Andrews, in your team, you have five minutes to make your presentation, and you can split your time with whomever you designate.
Go. So thank you. Good evening, San Jose City Council. Thank you for your time this evening. My name is Carrie Andrews, and I am the Superintendent of Cambrian School District. Tonight, on behalf of our community, as demonstrated by the 1,100 letters of support that we have submitted, I am humbly asking our school district's proposal be approved this evening. For the past two years, our school district has worked closely with our community in order to develop a concept that is amenable to our community and will allow for our district to generate much-needed unrestricted revenue. Through this proposal, we are seeking the opportunity to utilize district-owned property in a manner that will financially impact our ability to keep programs that directly benefit our students. We have four overarching goals for our Cambrian project. Number one, create a new, ongoing, sustainable source of unrestricted revenue. Two, maintain and honor our community's trust. Three, provide various levels of housing that conforms with the surrounding neighborhood while cooperating to meet the housing needs of a city. And finally, 75% of the property to remain PQP to preserve employment land. Again, on behalf of our community, please help our school district by supporting our proposal. I will now hand it off to Scott Sheldon, who is our lead on the technical aspects of our project.
Thank you, Dr. Andrews. Okay, I'm having, there we go. So my name is Scott Sheldon with Town Realty Advisors. We're a real estate advisory firm to the district. And what you're seeing on the screen now is the project description that identifies the area that the district is asking to change the general land use plan from the PQP to residential neighborhood. It's approximately 0.27 acres of the 10-acre site, and it conforms, as you can see, with the existing surrounding land area. The community outreach, as Dr. Andrews has mentioned, has been very extensive. It started over two years ago. It started with identifying the need of the district for financial relief and expansion to maintain programs. It continued into an implementation plan, and what you have before you is a result, again, of over two years' worth of work of working with the community, working with the schools, working with the neighborhood groups, and the neighbors. In addition, over 1,000 letters of support from the community has been received and passed along to the council members for their approval and review. We have also been working individually with the surrounding neighbors to help make sure that what we're doing is in line with what is in the community right now. The project commitment is very strong. The district needs to comply and work with the existing neighbors. They are going to be there for a very long term, educating the students and being an integral member of that Cambrian Park area. So what we put together is a plan that increases the housing from the original concepts that we had, has a mix of market-rate homes, but especially has affordable attached homes that will be deed-restricted, and it has ADUs. And this has been agreed to and signed by both the board as well as the developer as an amendment to the agreement that we have, that that is what he will deliver. This meets or exceeds the current affordability standards of the current inclusionary policy for housing, as well as what the new approved, if it is approved this evening, what that would be in terms of the standards that are there. And it does that not only in terms of percentage, but in terms of it goes to 80% of the affordability rate for the AMI. So with that, I'd like to introduce Randy Schofield, who is a longtime member and past president of the Cambrian Board.
Good evening. I want to talk a little bit about why we shouldn't delay this approval of the general plan amendment. As has been mentioned, we've been working with the community over two years to build out an acceptable neighborhood program that supports our community's goals, maintains that trust, as Dr. Andrews mentioned. We commissioned and completed those environmental studies for the R18 zoning. And then to the last bullet there, the program that we put together, the master plan, the rationale to build out this housing was really, as Dr. Andrews mentioned, was to create a source of unrestricted revenue and have that revenue start to appear the spring of '22.
Mr. Schofield, thank you. Your time is up, but maybe someone can ask you a question, and you can finish your train of thought. Right?
Sure.
So now we're gonna go to public comments. And the first speaker is Craig.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, Craig. Hold on for one second. Can everybody else put their mics on mute, please? Thank you. Go ahead, Craig.
Yeah, good evening, city council members. My name is Craig Mizushima, the Chief Risk Officer with the Housing Trust Silicon Valley. The Housing Trust continues to remain the single largest nonprofit lender for affordable housing in the Bay Area. Our programs utilize extensive private and public partnerships to ensure stable and secure affordable housing for local residents. We are supporting staff's recommendation to deny the proposed general plan amendment to allow the city additional time to explore policy changes for public school land conversions. We also support Director Huey's policy alternative contained in our supplemental memo to allow the district time to comply with an amended PQP policy after its adoption. We believe that our communities are more diverse, sustainable, and vibrant when everyone has access to affordable housing and a safe and stable place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather?
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I am a Cambrian School District parent and a resident living within a half-mile of the property. I have attended several school district board meetings this year and have been informed by the school board of the serious budget issues our school district is facing due to budget cuts, low enrollment, and COVID-19 challenges. I've read through their plans and think the initiative to develop this unused district land is smart, and if allowed to proceed, will provide much-needed funds to continue supporting our students and attracting and keeping quality teachers. As a resident of the neighborhood where the development will take place, I am not concerned about the development at all. I think the district has given tremendous thoughts to the needs of the community and has proposed projects that will benefit the community. I'm in favor of the building plan for the homes on the portion of the land because it's compatible with the neighborhood around it. And as a parent of children in the district, I fear what will happen if the initiative does not go through, such as cuts to programs and staff. Please vote in favor of this important development plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea?
Hi, my name is Andrea Syplikas. I'm really urging you to support the Cambrian School District proposal to convert this land asset into an ongoing revenue stream. It's the right land use for the neighborhood, and the district concept to build homes is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, which is where I live. By approving this proposal today, you're providing the school district with a critical path to the revenue opportunities that allow them to retain teachers, continue programs, and maintain the necessary resources to have a properly functioning school district. It's a fiscally responsible path for the district to take, and it cannot wait another year. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Vice Mayor Jones and Council Michael Lanesper, San Jose Director. We understand this item presents real policy challenges. Ideally, the federal and state governments would provide sufficient pandemic relief and funding for our schools, such that districts would not have to sell out valuable land assets, speculate in real estate, or become property owners and landowners for commercial activities totally unrelated to their educational mission just in order to generate revenues for basic operations. We strongly support the February 19 supplemental memo by Director Huey and the policy alternative that she has outlined. We find this to be a thoughtful approach and a compromise that is fair to all parties and our larger community. This option will allow time for the Cambrian School District to submit a proposal consistent with the PQP land conversion policy being developed by staff and to be taken to the council by June. Declining student enrollment and corresponding state aid across school districts in Silicon Valley are directly related to the inability of young families with children to afford to live here. Our teachers and classified staff face similar housing affordability challenges. Disposition of land that was purchased by local public agencies with public funds should be subject to a higher level of scrutiny, and the uses should align with the city's planning, housing, and community development policies, priorities.
Thank you, Michael. And it's, we heard you, thank you. Todd?
Our schools are gonna teach the rest of us how to live, how to live fully during challenging times, and we need to help them, and we need to support them, and we need to remove any obstacles in their way. Tonight, the Cambrian School District is asking for the ability to maximize their own resources, and we need to say yes. And we need to say yes so they can continue the important work of repairing the damage from a year like no other. We need to say yes so their momentum is not stymied in any way. We need to say yes so they can be prepared for anything. Twists and turns lie ahead for this small but mighty school district as they refine and perfect school protocols and best practices to prevent an unrelenting and ubiquitous virus from robbing our children of any more irreplaceable years of fundamental development. Please support and approve the Cambrian School District's plan to take care of our kids. And I have a question for Mr. Schofield. I was hoping he could finish his thought.
Thank you, Todd. Yuju?
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Yuju Park, and I am the new Senior Land Use and Planning Associate at SV at Home. We strongly recommend that city council adopt staff's recommendation to deny the general planned amendment for 1875 Cambriana Drive and complete the process of updating the PQP land use designation to provide more opportunities for both housing and increased revenue for school districts. While the land exchange proposed here appears to be outside the reach of the Surplus Land Act, the act explicitly applies to public school districts and has a defined process for any redevelopment. School surplus lands are an ideal place for residential development and affordable housing, which boosts enrollments while promising full market value to meet the critical financial needs of the districts. There are state and local expectations for surplus public land, which prioritize affordable housing. This council has acknowledged its role in meeting shared goals, and we look forward to being part of this discussion moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie?
Thank you. My name is Natalie Donatelli.
Oh, we lost Natalie. Natalie?
Oh, can you hear me now?
Oh, yes, we can hear you now.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm not sure what happened. My name's Natalie Donatelli. I'm the proud parent of two Cambrian students. We have amazing teachers and a great administrative team at our Bagby School. However, we have significant budget challenges in our district. Cuts have been made over and over throughout the years. Class sizes, enrichment teachers, and facility maintenance have been impacted. Given the added financial burden of COVID-19 and the need to update schools' physical infrastructure as well as our changing technology requirements, we need to find additional sources of revenue. I ask you to please support our Cambrian students and approve the district's application. The proposal for the land swap is consistent with what many other school districts have been able to do to drive revenue streams, and the proposed concept to build homes is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Our community supports the initiative, and our students need the investment in their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Good evening, members of the city council and Mayor Liccardo. My name is Mark Robson of Robson Homes. I am the builder selected by the district to develop their property. I want to quickly thank council member Foley for her leadership on this item, as well as council members Peralas, Jimenez, Asparza, and Cohen for their support memos. Robson Homes has been designing and building infill housing projects and integrating them into existing neighborhoods in the Bay Area for over 30 years. I realize there are competing scenarios for how to develop this site. Our proposal with 19% onsite or bedroom BMRs and 14 ADUs with 17 market-rate units provides a large number of affordable units for such a small project, and can be done in a way that is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, a neighborhood we've come to. the surrounding neighborhood, a neighborhood we've come to know well over the past year working with the neighbors. This proposal balances the need for affordable units and more density while respecting the character of the existing single-family neighborhood, and I respectfully request your support for this general plan change. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Nancy Albright, and I'm the superintendent of San Jose Unified School District, the largest school district in the county. On August fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the city council unanimously passed Resolution seventy-eight seven four-two. The resolution makes it clear that the responsibility of public education is vested exclusively in local school districts and the county office of education. It also makes clear that the city is to communicate with the school district when considering decisions that may impact the interests of the school district. I'm here to respectfully ask our mayor to please work with city staff to closely adhere to the resolution. The continuous disregard for this agreement between the city and the district erodes trust and opportunities for honest communication and collaboration, not just with San Jose Unified, but with the other school districts in the city of San Jose. I really want to urge the city council to please approve the request of the Cambrian School District for a general plan amendment. San Jose Unified believes Cambrian School District followed the law. They've executed the process, and I encourage you to show support for their plan.
Thank you. Paul?
Yes, thank you. Paul Soto from Oshu. Comments are restricted to a larger context of school allocations of funds, redlining, land use, you know, and this is a perfect example. You have all of these, you have all Anglos coming and asking this city for the very things that Chicanos have been deprived of for over a hundred years minimum, minimum. San Jose Unified School District put their hands on my mother and beat her, humiliated her, and shamed her for being Mexican in San Jose Unified School District, the schools within San Jose. And now Anglos are coming and asking for difference so that their kids could have school? Think about it.
Thank you, Paul. Samantha?
Hello, I am a lifelong resident of San Jose and the proud parent of a Cambrian student. I remember when Mayor Licardo knocked on our door seeking our vote in two thousand and fourteen, promising to listen to the residents of our city and committing himself to addressing our needs. Tonight, the Cambrian School District needs Mayor Licardo and the city council to make good on that promise. We need your support for our public schools. We are in the middle of a global pandemic. If we did not already know and appreciate how critical our public schools are in ensuring the safety and well-being of our children, we know it now. The impact of school closures is undisputed. Schools are the safe, are the social safety net for better or worse in every community, shouldering burdens that are too big and too hard for other government agencies to address. Those burdens will only increase as we continue to address and deal with this pandemic, or God forbid the next one. The time to act is now. The needs of our schools is immediate. Our district needs alternative sources of funding now. Please help to ensure that our schools can continue to serve its families, keeping us safe, fed, and protected, and providing the security desperately needed at this time of uncertainty. Thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. Sophie?
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Sophie Leach. I'm a fifth grade foreigner, and I would like to ask the council to support this application from Cambrian School District. If you support this, it would mean that our district can get more money, and we can keep programs I love, like PE, with a PE teacher, art, choir, and band. Next year, I'm going to middle school, and I like, I'm looking forward to trying new things like cooking choir and engineering class. I'm also really looking forward to playing basketball and soccer for price. Money made from this will help me pay, help pay for these programs. We have great teachers in Cambria, and I want it, want the district to be able to pay teachers more. Also want to keep classes smaller so the teacher has time to answer my questions. I don't want it to be hard for our district to find money for paying, for paying for things. Please support this application and students from Cambrian School Districts like me.
Melissa?
Hello, my name is Melissa Oechek. Can you hear me? I am an active member of the Cambrians, this Cambrian School District, both at elementary school and middle school, and I'm here to this, to ask you, please, to support this proposal from the Cambrian School District. Cambrian have been involved in this process for more than two years. I've heard you talk continuously this evening about fair and reasonable housing prices and affordable housing, but I would like to say that at no point have I heard you talk about fair and reasonable education and address the fact that this affects our children's education. I am constantly involved with discussions at a board level about budget and budget assignment. We are talking about cutting arts programs, PE programs, talking, evaluating, cutting school programs. We cannot afford to increase our teachers' salaries, which make it affordable to live here. We've been through this for two years. It's cost us four hundred thousand dollars so far to get to here, and every delay in this process was actually delaying us getting revenue valued at half a million dollars a year. Consider our students, not just affordable housing.
Thank you, Melissa. Beth?
Vice Mayor, it appears that Beth has an out, a previous version of Zoom, so if we can ask her to please update her Zoom software and re-raise her hand so we can allow her to speak.
Okay. Next is Beverly? Go ahead, Beverly. She's, we can't hear you. So let's put Beverly back in the queue. We'll go to Jose. Jose?
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Perfect, thank you. I'm here to speak in support of the Cambrian School District's general plan amendment application. One of the things that makes Cambrian unique is its community, and as an active parent member, supporting our school district in multiple committees, including budget advisory, I have firsthand account of the benefits this proposal to its budget, which with COVID has been challenged more than before. Cambrian should not be punished by the sudden change in policy. This district has been working for years, while the council stated earlier that it's just begun its outreach this week. This is the right land use for the neighborhood. The district concept to build homes continues to build its community, and it's com, it's compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. It helps preserve current jobs at Cambrian School Districts, like salaries for teachers and support staff, and creates new construction jobs. Please support Cambrian students and approve the district's application. Lastly, I'd like to ask Mr. Schofield a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Jaime?
Hello, I'm Jamie Taylor, and I am a Cambrian resident with two children in the Cambrian School District. The general plan amendment at Cambriana to change the zoning from PQP to RN one needs to be approved now. Our students deserve excellent quality education, and good education requires money. Our district has been in financial distress for the past five years. This would produce ongoing revenue. It is funding that is necessary and urgent for our students. Not only would it provide much-needed funding for the school district, but it would help preserve current jobs within the district and create new construction jobs. The community has shown their support. Delaying the approval will only further hurt our district and our students' education. Without the approval tonight, our district will be forced to make difficult budget decisions that will no doubt have negative impacts on our students. Our community and district need this. Please take action now. Thank you.
Thank you. Cole?
Good evening, everyone. This is Cole Cameron. I am a resident of Cambrian area. I live just down from the school district on the other side of Camden off of Union, and I'm very much in support of them. They've been to our Cambrian Community Council a number of times. It's been a very collaborative effort, and I think they've complied with the rules and will definitely help out the school district in becoming a good place for our students in their education. Thank you for your time this evening, and I look forward to you approving their request.
Thank you, Cole. Blair?
Hi, this sounds like a really interesting concept in the future of housing and schooling and the connection and how that can grow a neighborhood. Just, it sounds like most of your plans are set, but just to mention, you know, mixed, mixed income ideas for housing is really important at this time, and what's the term? Rent, mortgage, I can't think of the term. Low rent. Creating, creating a property system where the rent's really low, where they buy the property, and the mortgage can, you know, is it's really cheap. I can't think of its term. It's good socialist practices for how to buy land and then keep the price down, and that can create a whole price, bring the price down for the whole region, basically, for the whole area. So good luck in your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan?
Hello, I'm the president of the Cambrian School District Teachers Union, and I understand that many times decisions that seem simple are not. However, taking vacant land and creating much-needed housing while simultaneously generating revenue for a district that desperately needs it is just indeed that simple. Listening to the comments tonight, it seems clear that the question on the table is not so much if to develop this land, but rather how to develop it. So a little background. It took two years and a lot of money just to get to this point. Our district received a lot of pushback just trying to create housing that's similar to the surrounding neighborhood. A request for higher-density housing and more district money that we can't afford for alternative proposals won't get off the ground. This is the best option we have, and I would respectfully ask that the council pass this proposal, please, to help the residents of the city and the students of our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin?
Good evening. My name is Erin Ryan. My husband and I have lived in the Cambrian area for the past twelve years. We have two children, a current first grader at Fumatri, and an incoming kindergartner. We will be in our Cambrian home and in the Cambrian School District for at least nine more years and have a deeply vested interest in making sure our school district can remain fiscally solvent and responsible. Please support Cambrian students and work with the district to approve the viable plan for the land redevelopment project at the Metzler site. It's the right thing to do for our schools and our community, and most importantly, our kids, who will receive the benefits that the funds will provide. Our community supports this, and this cannot wait any longer while programs are on the line now. The land development initiative helps preserve current jobs at the Cambrian School District, like salaries for teachers and support staff, and it creates new construction jobs. It's a win for all involved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sergey? Sergey?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you, council members and Mr. Mayor. My name is Sergey Maryuk. I'm a longtime resident of the Cambrian School District. I had two children go through the schools in Cambrian District over the years. I have seen everything from tremendous effort of the district and teachers to make the most with available resources, but I was also very aware that resources were limited at times, and there was always a need for additional resources. And with this proposal, it seems like the combination of factors have been kind of combined into the best possible scenario. The school district will clearly benefit. This is a well-thought-out proposal. I strongly support your approval of this proposal going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Heather?
Hello, my name is Eve Burden. I am in eighth grade, and I go to Stein Dorf Steam School. And I would just like to say that every school year I look forward to all the activities as students we get to participate in, school plays, after-school sports, but also electives like ukulele and classes like Makers Lab. Things like these aren't possible without the money our district needs. Even during a pandemic, our amazing teachers have been able to be creative with online school. We have pickups where we drive past a school and collect maker kits with all sorts of materials to tinkle with. We have converted the ukulele elective to learning how to use GarageBand to create our own music. If Cambrian has the funds it needs, imagine what other incredible things we can achieve, how much we can improve these activities, and how much students can learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Oscar?
Hello, thanks for this time. So I just wanted to get some clarification on the revenue stream and how that looks like. If you could talk to me more about that, and then also, how does the dynamic look like in terms of renters who would be renting this property? And when it comes to, you know, diversity, inclusion, how does that work out? And then also, all the information shown today, is that available for the public? And then I would also wondering, when it comes down to the, the construction contractor, was there bids for that since it is public funds? I just want to get some more clarification in those aspects in it. Oh, also, I want to understand more of the governance component of the actual facilities or the apartment complex, if you can talk to me more about those things. Thanks.
Thank you, Oscar. DP?
Hi, thank you very much for the time. Something I wanted, seems to mention this, but we just passed Measure R in November of two thousand and twenty for eighty-eight million dollars for the school. So all these things that people are asking for, modernizing classrooms, labs, technology needed to support high-quality instruction in math, science, engineering, and arts, that's all what this was tagged for. So I'd like to know what the parents think this money is going for when they come to ask that we say, yes, please, go ahead and build on this open spot. The other thing I'd like to point out is that there are other projects happening in this neighborhood that greatly impact this community, including the front parcel of the school district, which is now being earmarked for a long-term care facility. So that's a bunch of construction on the front part of this property as well. We have Cambrian Plaza. We have the Campbell Union School District across the street that is being developed with, I can't remember, something around the neighborhood of sixty homes. We have the Guitar Center that's being developed. We have a lot of development going on right in our very highly dense area. So while I appreciate the parents and kids all want this.
Thank you, DP. James?
Hi, I am James or Jimmy Shabeta, and I am the ASP president at Ida Price Middle School. And the benefits from the programs that I have been in are astronomical. Like, for example, take, take basketball. It's taught me a way to make friends, and it's taught me a way to, you know, keep my patience on the court and, yeah, just have great experiences in middle school. And being ASP president, I wanted to be able to speak in front of the school and, you know, make myself worthy and be a great face of the school, you know, like, everyone looks at me and they're like, wow, that's a great school. But without, you know, due to COVID nineteen with lack of funds, I'm not able to do that. And I want younger kids to also be able to do that later on, but they wouldn't have an example to look at without these funds that are needed for the program. So, yeah, I feel like we.
Oh, you got cut off. Beth?
Hi, thanks for your time. I had a whole thing written, but I'm going to change it up on the last minute. I wanted to address the comment about the fund. These funds that the district would raise from this revenue source would be go directly into the unrestricted fund, which means that we can use those for salaries. We can use those for programs. It's all unrestricted. Funds raised for Measure R are very targeted and very specific. So there is a difference there. I would also like to urge the Cambrians, the approval of this bid and to make sure that the Cambrian School District and its students do not get caught up in the middle of this new policy change. They have spent a lot of time already on this, and not to see revenue for two more years would be detrimental to a school district that is already facing a budget crisis. I please urge you to support this measure, this application, and pass it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly? Yes, we can hear you. Yes, we can hear you.
So I'm Beverly Merrill, and I'm a longtime Cambrian resident, employee of Cambrian School District and also CSA union president. I'm urging you to support the Cambrian School District's proposal to convert a land asset into an ongoing revenue stream that will benefit students for years to come by approving our general plan amendment application today. As a result of California's local funding formula and COVID-19, our school district has been financially devastated because the state of California has dramatically reduced school budgets. The district has been working on this plan for two years now and waiting anymore would be a significant financial loss to our district. By approving this proposal today, you are providing our school district with a critical path to revenue opportunities that will allow us to retain teachers, continue programs and maintain the necessary resources we need to have for a properly functioning school district. I urge you to approve the district's general plan amendment. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Beverly. Elliot?
Hello, my name is Elliot Erickson, and I am current, and I am a Cambrian fifth grader. Throughout my years at Farnham, I have really enjoyed live PE, live music, art and band. I'm really excited to play soccer at Price Middle School next year. It would make my school experience a lot less fun if these things went away. Also, all my teachers have been so good. I would hate to lose them because the district has to let them go. Please pass this application so Cambrian can keep their great programs and teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa?
Hello. Okay, my name is Melissa Winchell. I'm a parent of a first grader in Cambrian School District, an active member of our community and school system and a resident of the neighbor of the project site. I also worked for over a decade developing and managing affordable housing. I'm a huge proponent of that, and I am asking for you to give your approval to Cambrian for this project. This project creates affordable housing that will fit in with our community while also providing a stable income source to support our schools. This pandemic has only driven already struggling schools to even greater financial concerns. As you have already heard, this income stream, delays to this income stream will limit our ability to fund necessary programs and to hire staff. Further delays will only increase construction costs and our overhead costs, which will reduce the financial benefit to our schools. This project promotes equity in our community housing and in our schools. Please approve it.
Thank you. Alicia?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Alicia Sanders, and I am a proud Cambrian parent, and I'm also a proud Cambrian teacher. I work for Starting Arts. We're a theater program that sends enrichment programs into many of the schools in the Cambrian District. Saying no tonight has a direct impact on programs like ours, valuable programs that improve our students' lives and mental health and will be on the chopping block first if the district has to make difficult financial choices, which it will if a no happens tonight. Any delay in the approval takes away benefits that our students need so desperately, especially in this time of so much loss. The bond measure mentioned earlier again had a very specific target for its funding as it relates primarily to facilities improvements. Funds are desperately needed for so many other reasons in the district as well. Please respect the two long years of thoughtful work that have gone into this proposal. Please support our students and our staff. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all of our public speakers, so I'm going to bring it back to council and council member Foley.
Thank you. First, I want to thank my colleagues for allowing us to move this item from the end of the agenda to right after dinner. I appreciate all of the voices that we heard from today, particularly the four students that we heard from. This, whatever parents said this, they're absolutely right. This is about the children. This is not about anything else. This is about this little school district being able to raise $500,000 by it from the use of its land in order to balance its budget so that it continue to offer programs to its kids. It needs to, this school district, Cambrian School District, needs to focus on its core business, which is to provide the best education it can for all of its children. So I want to thank first all of the members of the public who were who were here to speak and who are still here present. This reminds me so much of my school board days. You know, I know my colleagues get tired of me hearing me say that I was on the school board for 14 years, but it's just hard to not go there when you have a school related issue like this. So bear with me a little bit. I also want to thank my council colleagues who helped in the memo that I submitted. Councilmember Jimenez, Paralus and Asparza for their sport, their support and their work on this memo. And also councilmember Coen, I appreciate your memo as well. We received over 1,100 letters of support in for this project. This is a little project. This is 2.7 acres. Initially, it started off as a single family homes development and working with the school district with my staff and their staff. We work to create affordable housing projects where there will be 15% of the development will be designated affordable housing. There will be 14 ADUs which are affordable by design. There will be an exception written into the CCNRs that the the covenants, conditions and restrictions that will prohibit the use of short-term rentals for those ADUs. The 17 new houses will be market rate, but the four single-family homes, they're actually duets or they're attached homes, they will be below market. The 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 school district is looking for income of $500,000. They need this $500,000 in order to balance the budget. This in in school district finances, they must create a balanced budget for two, for three years out rolling. So this will continue to help them show that they have a three-year budget that that balances. It's also for what's important about these funds is that these are unrestricted. That means they can use them any way they they want to, like our general funds. These are unrestricted general funds. That's really important, even though they've passed bonds and they passed parcel taxes, all of those funds are designated for certain things. I want to thank the school district for working with us on creating the development project that has been, I'm hoping they're going to report a little bit about that later. Maybe I can ask Randy about that in a minute. I've already told you about the development itself and the scope of it. These changes that they have made result in 35 housing units. Originally, the plan was for 18 units. This is 35 housing units, including the ADUs, the four below market rents. And the the piece about the affordable housing, the four below market rents is important because I truly support affordable housing, but this project will not allow any greater development in that neighborhood. It's just not that kind of a high-density neighborhood, nor is there city services nearby that will help any higher density as proposed in the the policy that we have yet to see as a council. I've seen it a couple of weeks ago, but council won't weigh in on it for a while. I know it was filed by staff at 5:15 today. I'm not sure how many council members have actually had a chance to look at the actual proposed policy. I have, I've had a chance to meet with some of the superintendents about it and get their feedback on it. But we, that's, that is a discussion for another day. That is not what we're discussing today. We are not approving a policy today. And frankly, I agree that we need to have some sort of policy in place. What I don't agree with is delaying a vote on this item to wait for that policy. Because while we are getting 35 units in this policy, I don't believe that Cambrian will come forward with a policy with a development plan in a future policy. I'll ask the superintendent that question in a minute, but I really don't think they're going to come back with that. Because higher density doesn't work right there. Where higher density will work is right down the street. You heard about the Cambrian Park Plaza. It's a big development that is currently under, an application has been submitted. We're working through it. 328 housing units on the corner of Union and Camden. That's where high density goes. That's where it can go. That's where it is likely to go once the plan goes through. So I've talked about the the need for the money or the amount of the money, but I want to tell you why this is coming up now. We are in decline, the school districts are in declining enrollment. There was an article in the paper just, I think, last week that said birth rates are way down and haven't been up since 2005, and that is across all demographics. So declining enrollment affects all school districts, all 19 of them, because they depend on each student that goes to their school for income. If they have less school, less students coming to school, they have less income coming in. And that means they have to balance their budget some way. They have to close schools. Really a hard thing to do. They have to lay off staff. Even harder to do and and more in in the times of COVID, even more impactful. Districts have are real estate rich and cash poor. I'm not asking that we give a blanket approval to all school districts coming forward from now and in to in perpetuity. I'm asking that we approve this plan because this school district has been operating under prior rules. We cannot change the rules under them right now. We need to approve this plan and move it forward and get 35 units versus zero units. I think I'm going to stop there. We are in an affordability crisis. Everybody knows that. We talk about this all the time. And one way we don't help the affordability crisis is forcing unnecessary regulations on a group of by of an organization that wants to build housing. They want to build 35 units. That's 35 families that could live in those homes. And as I said, the ADUs are affordable by design. Less than a half a mile from here is the Cambrian Park Plaza. We have density there. This campus consists of three parcels. The one is the one we're discussing today that the applicant is submitting for a PQP conversion to residential dense residential zoning, so they can build some housing. The middle of the property is an old elementary school campus called Metzler. That's why you hear them call call up Metzler sometimes. That remains as the house for a long-term preschool program that's been in existence probably 30 years. And also a gymnastics studio that's been there, I don't know how long, but both of those are revenue streams for the school district. The other piece that you heard talk about is on the corner of Union and Cambriana, right across from Camden Community Center or close to Camden Community Center. And the school district has views looking at building senior housing for that memory care housing where that too will be able to, they will have them, that will be an employment center. With all that, I'm going to move my memo. And I'm, and I'm just going to read it. So, and I know you all can read this, but I don't get the opportunity to present these things very often, and obviously I'm really passionate about it and have worked really hard to get it to this point. So I'm going to, I will move the memo authored by myself, councilmember Jimenez, Paralus and Asparza to approve the general plan amendment as proposed by the applicant to direct the planning director to work with the future developer in the development to review process to ensure one, inclusion of onsite affordability in any residential development at the 1975 Cambriana Drive site that meets the current inclusionary housing ordinance of 15% with a maximum 80% AMI restriction. That means that people who earn 80% of living, 80% of annual median income would qualify to purchase this. To teachers, to nurses, for example. Construction of at least 14 accessory dwelling units. These dwelling units should be restricted through covenants, conditions and restricted to disallow their use as short-term rentals. And finally, to direct staff to explore policy changes for public school land conversions that could provide more opportunities for affordable housing. With that, I will move my memo or my joint memo and that memo of councilmember David Cohen.
Second. Thank you, councilmember Foley.
And just a couple of questions, although you think that I was have gone on long enough. Randy, you finished midstream, so do you have a sentence or a minute that you would like to complete?
Sure, thank you, councilmember Foley. Councilmember Foley, perhaps you could ask a question that's specific. That would make, he could actually respond to.
Sure, Randy, would you, if the plan fails today, do you plan to bring back the proposal with the higher density under the proposed policy from the city?
If the plan fails today, the housing would cease to be a project that could move forward. The revenue stream being not present would cause us to then go into the least desirable position, which would be probably dozens of staff layoffs and program reductions because, as you know, that third budget, third year budget budget cycle out, right now, we're in a deficit of over 1.3, 1.5 million dollars. And so we would have to reduce that. So it would not come back in a different form. We could not afford the expense and the time necessary to go back and rebuild something that could possibly meet that in. And quite frankly, it wouldn't fit our community's support. We would have an uphill battle to ever even present something that's different than what we brought today.
So then it's currently vacant land. What would happen to the land then if you didn't bring it back? Would it continue as vacant land?
Vacant land.
Okay, that that's it. That's all the questions I had. I just wanted to give Randy to this opportunity to answer my questions. Thank you, and thank you for all the support I've had.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Cohen?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I just want to thank all the members of the public who came out to speak tonight. It is refreshing to hear, especially students speak. I've been only off of a school board for the last two months, and one of the best things is always having students and parents participating in in board meetings. And so hearing from some elementary and middle school students was a was a pleasure tonight. You know, school districts have have spent a lot of time over the years looking for creative ways to raise money, especially in these times of declining enrollment and revenue shortfalls. And and I, you know, I've had a lot of conversations over the years about what we do with surplus lands in school districts. And this is, this is not going to be the last time we hear this coming from school districts. I know pretty much every school district around, you know, around us in the east side is having the same conversation right now. The district that I just came from is having conversations about what to do with some land and how to raise some money using those lands, and other districts are having this conversation. And districts have often counted on some autonomy about how to make land use decisions using their land and raise money from those lands. And obviously, it is important that the council have a conversation about what we expect districts to provide. But we also can't hold districts accountable to a standard that doesn't exist when they're making those decisions. And that's what frustrates me about about this process. The districts were told, we'll give you a playbook, but the playbook never arrived and the district spent, I believe, a year and a half, two years on this, on this on this plan. And and wasn't really ever told to that the really what the rules were going to be. And and as we know, school districts, their primary function is not land use. Their primary function is not making deals like this. They do this on the side. It takes a lot of staff time and resources away from their primary function to do this. And having to go back and redo this and spend more staff time and resources on doing it is unfair to that school district. And so I do think, given, you know, this is a small portion of a large school site, that it is in the best interest of the district and for our families in that community to to approve this deal. I also want to thank councilmember Foley and the district for working together on improving the density on that site and making some more affordable options there. You know, when this came forward to us, I think there were 18 units on the site. All for all at market rate. Now we have 35 units of which a portion is affordable, meeting the city's current affordable requirement for the number of units being put there. So I I'm actually, I just want to thank the school district and other partners for doing that and doing it fairly quickly to bringing a policy, a plan forward that actually does meet, you know, the city's affordable goals for that site. So I don't think we should delay Cambrian's plan any longer and wait for the city to to put together a policy that, you know, we're not sure exactly how it's going to play You know, we're not sure exactly how it's gonna play out and what the final, is, final look of that policy is gonna be. And I also don't think we should kind of force the city's policy to be rushed in order to help Cambrian to get this site done. I mean, that's the other thing that worries me is that we're saying we can get this policy done quickly in order to make sure Cambrian gets something done. And that's not necessarily the right thing to do either. So, um, I will, uh, be supporting, uh, councilmember Foley's motion. And then I hope the rest of the council will as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Frost?
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, and, uh, thank you to staff for the presentation and to all of our speakers, especially. Uh, as was already been mentioned a couple of times now to the young leaders of our community, thank you for speaking up. You are shaping our democracy by participating in it. Um, I, I appreciate that our staff has been working to find a compromise to help the district meet its objectives while pushing for more affordable housing. Uh, and I especially appreciate, uh, councilmember Foley for, uh, inviting me into her brown act. And, and I was very clear with her, uh, from the beginning that I wanted to push for the most density and affordability possible. And, uh, councilmember Foley and the district went and revisited their plan and were able to make adjustments, including with the attached homes. And the additional ADUs, and I do appreciate that change. Um, I actually had the same question as councilmember Foley. Um, and, and so I know that, uh, right based on the answer here, if we don't approve this GP amendment. It's safe to say this lot would likely remain vacant. Um, it would not serve any benefit to the school. But more importantly, it wouldn't serve any benefit to our community, uh, and especially, uh, with an opportunity to build housing. Uh, so I am supportive of the applicant here and I feel that the applicant has worked well with the community, uh, and the city. And, uh, this will help the school district to be able to remain financially stable. It will help bring in more housing. And it will, uh, redevelop what would otherwise remain a vacant piece of land. Uh, I'm also not against us moving towards approving a, um, a policy that allows for PQP conversions for housing. Uh, and I look forward to diving deeper into that policy work. Uh, I'll be happy to support the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Asparson?
Councilmember Asparza, you're muted.
Sorry, thank you. Uh, I was very pleased to, um, to. Uh, support councilmember Foley's leadership on this item. Um, I, I agree with councilmember Cohen's comments about having the goalpost moved. Um, as the district moves forward. I, I really wanted to make a couple of comments. Um, and, and that is, one, there isn't a school district. Well, I don't think there's a school district in the city, although there's one, there's a one school, school district, so maybe they're the exception. But, um, there are many school districts in our city that aren't looking at this issue. Um, that aren't looking at school closures ironically, uh, because of declining enrollment. Um, declining enrollment is, um, an issue for them because families can't afford to live here. And, and we're losing folks all over the city, east side, west side, obviously, to Almeden Valley. Um, and so, um, this little tiny project, um, tries to balance both of those needs. Um, and, uh, I'm, I'm proud to support it. And I, I also wanted to, for the second thing, I, I just wanted to comment that, um. We really need to be mindful of our own responsibilities as a city, but mindful of the rights. Of school districts in our city, which were ironically, um, created in, uh, I think it was nineteen fifty-four. Uh, as a result of the city of San Jose's annexations. Um, and so, uh, I think that we should approach our, the school districts in our city with a spirit of partnership. Um, moving forward. Um, and so I look forward to the planning process. Um, for the school site plan moving forward, but again, we should to be taking a spirit of partnership. Um, moving forward, and I will be supporting councilmember Foley's motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, other comments? I want to thank all the community members who have expressed their very strong support for their schools. Um, I appreciate all the, the young students who came forward. Obviously, it's a testament to the job that, uh. That superintendent Carrie Andrews and her teachers and, uh, the, the many staff. Uh, at her schools are doing to win the trust of parents and the enthusiasm of their kids. And it is refreshing and admirable. Uh, I think it was more than eleven hundred letters, like councilmember Foley mentioned. And that is extraordinary. I also very much appreciate that superintendent Andrews is in a really difficult position. Trying to keep a school district afloat, uh, facing monumental fiscal challenges. And we know those challenges are not unique to her district by, by all means, though she's got to do everything she can with her team. Uh, to be able to, uh, pay teachers to, uh, do what they do so well and to be able to keep the district. Um, afloat. So I want to thank you, superintendent Andrews, because I know that, uh, this is not an easy time to lead a school district. And I know that there are many districts in peril. Um, and I just wanted to understand a little better some of the decision-making that got to this point, if I could. Because I know this has been a couple of years it's been referred to and we're sort of catching up, understanding all the decisions that got here. And, and I certainly appreciate the desire to monetize land. That's an asset you've got. The five hundred thousand dollars, the annual revenue that you would generate, is, is that for a limited period or for? Is that just based on commercial rents that you would generate theoretically forever if you continued operating the site? I was just trying to understand that.
I know I can answer this question, but I'm gonna have Scott Sheldon answer this question. It is an annual.
Okay. And for, as long as you, that is for into the long-term future?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, Scott, did you want to add anything to that?
Sure, thank you. Um, yes, it would be an, an ongoing source of revenue that would go on in perpetuity. Uh, the, the, the methodology and the, and the vehicle for that would be, uh, as through an exchange with a, uh, another commercial piece of property. That would generate rents that would be the source of that, uh, revenue, again, over a long period of time.
Right. And superintendent, it was twenty-two homes with some number of ADUs? I'm just trying to make, get the numbers right. Twenty?
Total of thirty-five units, so seventeen single homes, fourteen ADUs and four, um, sorry.
Attached.
Yeah.
Catched.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
And that was shifted over time with, uh, collaboration with the city. So we didn't start off with that. We started off with eighteen. So we've been doing a lot of collaboration to get to, to this piece.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I just, the ADUs, of course, are attached to, or, uh. Uh, not attached to, but on the same parcels as the homes. So presumably, uh, residents may use them for their elderly parents, for their eighteen-year-old who needs a, a man cave, whatever it might be. Uh, it may or may not be a, a separate home, fair to say.
I think it's optimal, um, size for people in the service industry to keep them here. So it could be used for both.
Yeah.
So right now, in terms of keeping people here, it is, it is a need.
But there were mentioned the CCRs, that they actually require the homeowners to rent or lease the ADU to someone else? Or be up to the discretion of the homeowner?
No, that, that would be, uh, what the, the reason for that is, is that there's been a lot of issues in other areas of San Jose. Where, uh, services such as B and B were doing, you know, very short-term rentals. And, uh, what we wanted to do, and that was important to, uh, the district council, um, member Foley, as well as her brown act. To make sure that there were restrictions on that, that those would not become, uh, vacation rentals, if you will, very short-term rentals.
That would be. I, I understood that restriction. I'm just wondering, is there also a requirement that the ADUs actually be rented? To somebody who needs affordable housing?
No.
Okay.
There's no, there's nothing in there for that, no.
Right, so they could just be used by the homeowner for, uh, another. Back in, whatever they want, for a family member, they want to live with them, for all the reasons why people use.
Still, mayor, still create housing, whether they move a caregiver who, uh, lives there. To take care of their elderly parents in the house or vice versa, it still is an, a housing opportunity. We count ADUs as housing elements in the ad hoc housing report. So I'm not sure why we're not considering it housing under, under this proposal. But the homeowner would have the opportunity to do whatever they want.
Councilmember Foley, I actually do have the right to speak at this time. If you'd like to speak, raise your hand and I'll call on you. I, I just wanted to be able to ask questions and I'm, hopefully you'll allow me to do that. So i- in terms of where we're focused on doing the development. Um, where, you, you decided that, that the density would be too great if you went higher than the, the seventeen homes. And the four affordable homes and the, the additional ADUs. It, given that it was right against the neighborhood, and I was just wondering, had you considered developing the site? That's right on Union Avenue? At, for housing?
We, we have a proposal that we're working with right now, mayor, that, uh, will be, create fifty units of, uh, senior housing on that. Uh, that will be in a memory care format. There will be jobs. There will be twenty-four hours, seven day a week, three hundred and sixty-five day a year jobs. That go along with that, and that's where the density would be on this particular property.
Okay. And the memory care, is that, can you give me a sense of what that looks like? In terms of the number of folks who might be served by the memory care?
Um, i- in terms of the population, what we've been told by the, the, uh, group that we're working with. That, that there will be somewhere between eighty and a hundred people that reside there.
Right.
And then there'll be the appropriate number of staff. I don't know exactly what that is. I'm sure it's time and date dependent. But there will be staffing that will be all year round again, twenty-four hours a day.
Okay. And ha- has there been any consideration of, of conversations with affordable housing developers about potential development? Affordable housing?
We, we went out on an RFP, uh, mayor, uh, back, uh, last year, of, over a year ago. And, uh, we asked different people to propose on that and, uh, the, the responses that we got back were none from the affordable housing people.
Okay, so nobody was interested?
Well, nobody responded. I don't know if they were interested or not. Responded.
And, and that was just for that backside, I guess it's called C on the map. The letter C is, doesn't it, sort of the, that was the site you went out with? Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. Had, I'm curious, was there any discussion maybe with that, the city housing department about that, we would be interested in helping to pay for it or buying it?
Um, I, I did not have any, uh, discussions with them. We had lots of discussions with planning staff in terms of what we were talking about. But nothing in specificity with that.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate, uh, you helping me, uh, Mr. Sheldon and, and superintendent Andrews. So just trying to understand better the, the, uh, the arrangement. I, I wanted to understand better, Rosalind, I think there's been a lot of concerns expressed about goalposts moving and. Uh, playbooks changing and so forth. And I just want to make sure I, I'm clear. The general land use policy that keeps getting cited in the reports is LU one point nine. And that policy today, and I guess has been the case for many years, is quote, "to preserve existing public quasi-public lands." Is, is that right?
Yes, mayor, that, that is correct. And, um, yes, and that's why staff recommendation, uh, was for denial. And of course, planning commission as well.
Okay, so that's based on where the goalpost has been for many years, fair to say. Is that right?
Uh, yes, since at least twenty-eleven with the, the latest update of our general plan.
Okay, so then, two years ago, I think the council instructed you and the planning staff. To go off and come up with a policy and presumably, like all other things in the city, got interrupted by COVID. Um, and, uh, you, you now, you're back at it again. And I, I, I know that because I was at a public meeting just yesterday, and I know there were several superintendents there. Uh, maybe even as many as a dozen superintendents with quite a few other folks. And, and that policy that was responsive to the council direction. As I, as I recall, i- it contains a very strong preference, uh, a priority for affordable housing. For conversions of public quasi-public land. Is that right?
Yes, mayor, that's correct.
And, and the, the reason why we want to conserve public quasi-public land, because I guess it's all, like all land, it's scarce. But we'd use that for building anything from parks to libraries to allowing other schools, uh, to be, uh, able to have facilities. Uh, and so we want to make sure whatever it is, it's something that really serves a broad public interest. I- i- is that, is that the rationale why we, we want to raise the bar to sort of demand something more in terms of public interest for a conversion?
Uh, yes, mayor, as, as we all know, our, our PQP land inventory is quite limited. Um, and yet we have demand for it. And I, we understand that perhaps school districts, um, may not have demand for it. Given declining enrollment. Uh, we know that there is demand for other public uses, be it educational or recreational. Um, there, there is demand, uh, for this PQP land.
Okay. So, I, do you know how the city is going to enforce a commitment? That's made that there's gonna be CCNRs, that will ensure that ADUs don't get used for short-term rentals. I mean, if somebody is using it for an Airbnb rental, do, do we have any recourse?
That is a good question, um, and probably not best for me, uh, as, as representing more of the planning and land use aspect. Um, I, I would perhaps defer to Nora to answer, you know, the legality. And, and what instruments or tools the city might have to enforce.
Thank you. Um, that would depend on how the project came forward. Um, CCNRs, the city probably doesn't have a right to enforce. Um, but it would depend on how the project came forward and what agreements were made as the, uh, um, development. Uh, piece of this came for approvals.
Okay. I, I appreciate all, everyone being so patient with my questions. I was just trying to understand more clearly. That this very challenging situation. And I appreciate that everybody right now is trying their very best to do the best for their community. And I should say for our community, because this is one community that we all represent. My concern is this. I would have loved to have had the opportunity to have the Cambrian School District staff, working with planning staff. On trying to figure out, is there a way that we can be both consistent with our principles? And ensure that the, the school district gets the revenue it critically needs. And I'm pretty sure that given the dollars that are out there between. County Measure A, between our Measure E, the other sources of affordable housing. That the opportunity to buy affordable housing in a high resource, to buy land for affordable housing in a high resource area like this one. Uh, would be very attractive, I think certainly, to our department and to the county and to others. And I guess my concern is, is that if we were, if the policy were adopted today and we know it's not. That would be the kind of conversation we'd be having. And rather than converting PQP land in a way that simply builds predominantly market-rate housing. Um, and I suspect that these are homes that are gonna be pretty expensive, with the exception of the four that are, are, are affordable. Uh, we would be able to build, uh, much more affordable housing. And we didn't, wouldn't necessarily have to do it there. We could do it on the front edge of Union and perhaps there could be a rearrangement of the plan. To enable, uh, memory care, long time, other kinds of care facility to be behind it. Uh, to allow, enable density to be further away from the rest of the neighborhood. And, and I guess what's challenging, I know that everyone's trying to race to the finish line. Because Cambrian's got a fiscal challenge they've got to fix, and I appreciate their need to rush. And staff has tried to rush, to hurry up, to, to catch up and clearly hasn't gotten there because we don't have a policy yet. And I appreciate everybody, again, is trying their best. Um, but I, I guess I'm, I'm frustrated that we couldn't take a step back and say, isn't there an opportunity for this conversation to happen? Where the school district, the kids, the teachers can get exactly what they need? And we can actually ensure we engage in these decisions in a principled, consistent way. Uh, that actually could enhance affordable housing precisely in a part of the city. Where I think, as you're going to hear from the housing department for the next several months, this is exactly what we critically want. Because we know what families, particularly with limited incomes, is critically needed access to good schools and a lot of the amenities that are available in a lot of parts of our city that are more affluent. And so I'm, I guess I'm, I'm not going to support the motion. I understand which way it's going. Clearly, it's very clear. But my hope is, is that when we consider the next one, that it won't be an us versus them approach of feeling like people have to take sides with the school district versus the city. Because this is a really important decision for our whole community, because public land is really scarce. And this land has to serve all of us in some way. And I'm concerned that we're getting here might have satisfied the immediate need for revenue, and that's an important need. I don't mean to denigrate it at all, an important need for revenue for the school district. But we really missed a big opportunity, and we got predominantly very high expensive housing, high cost housing, for the most part. Um, when we could have had significantly more affordable housing. And I think we all know at two point seven acres, uh, we've all seen projects at fire, fire higher densities than this that can enable far more families to be part of the Cambrian School District and actually have those children driving revenue to the school district because of the way the funding formulas, of course, work. Given the challenges the district has, uh, with a declining population enrollment. So I'm going to vote against this. I appreciate everybody's earnest efforts. And I hope, uh, that we might be able to engage more collaboratively, uh, when the next one comes, because it's going to keep coming, because we got a lot of school districts in trouble right now. And they're all going to be looking for ways to monetize their land. And the question is, are we going to do it in a way that also preserves our responsibility as a city, both to the kids and to the whole community over the use of that land? I guess we're fully.
No, I'm finished. I'm ready for the vote.
Okay. Let's vote.
Martinez?
Yes.
Carlos?
Hi.
Owen? Owen?
Hi.
Thank you. Roscoe?
No.
No?
No.
Davis?
Hi.
Farza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Ollie?
Hi.
Mayhem?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Liccardo?
No. Are that measure passes? That motion passes, I should say. We're now back to the item that we had interrupted. And again, thank you to all the members of the community who came forward to speak. Um, so, uh, we have left off.
We had a time certain, I think, for the other item at eight o'clock.
Eight, uh, ten point two, Mayor.
Yeah, we do, don't we? Okay, why don't we go to ten point two then? Uh, well, we've got two minutes. Could we, um?
Go back to some.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, that's fine. We can use the two minutes.
Yeah, uh, we had already completed public comment on, uh, that item.
Uh, Mayor, uh, Gail Osmer, um, actually tried to raise her hand on that item, so maybe.
Good. Okay, Gail, are you with us? You want to speak on going back to that item, which was item six point one?
I'm not seeing her anymore, Mayor.
Okay. All right, uh, that was six point one, of course, was the preliminary forecasting residential garbage recycling rates. All right. Okay, uh, let's go ahead and take up ten point two. Um, that is the amendment to San Jose Citywide Design Standards and Guidelines. There is a presentation. Welcome again, Rosen.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, actually Timothy Root, who is our Planning Division Manager, is going to lead us through the presentation. We just have a short presentation. So I will hand it over to Tim. Tim, are you there on the call?
Tim, if you're trying to talk, you're muted.
Oh, he's just indicated he needs to be promoted to panelist.
Okay.
We'll do that now.
Thank you.
Is it Brian Darby?
No.
No, it's Tim Root.
Sorry, my, excuse me. He should be joining now.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Tim Root, Planning Division Manager in Planning, Building and Code Enforcement. I'm here to speak to you tonight about the update of the citywide design guidelines. The planning commission, uh, Planning Division has existing design guidelines that are currently used in development review, but which date back thirty years or more. Uh, beginning in twenty seventeen, staff was directed by council to update the city's design guidelines as council priority number nineteen. The guidelines update project includes three phases. The first phase was the downtown design guidelines and standards that the council approved in May twenty nineteen. Uh, the second phase is this project, the citywide guidelines. And the third phase will be the various apart urban village plan, uh, guidelines coming to council this spring. These citywide guidelines are not intended to prevent any future planning process from developing its own district-specific standards and guidelines. Next, please. The new guidelines conform to recent state laws that require that newly adopted development standards for residential development must be objective, meaning they are measurable or otherwise verifiable and not subject to interpretation. The new guidelines document before you includes both mandatory standards, which are objective and measurable, as well as advisory guidelines organized by topic. Next slide, please. The citywide guidelines would apply throughout the city, except for single-family residences, which are covered by existing design guidelines that are working well. Uh, historic buildings would not be covered, because they're subject to additional environmental and historic review requirements. And downtown San Jose, including the Duran Station area, is covered by the downtown guidelines and standards the council adopted in twenty nineteen. Many urban village plans, specific plans, and North San Jose also have their own district-specific standards and guidelines, which will continue to apply and will take priority over the new citywide guidelines for the topics they address. And again, the new citywide standards and guidelines are not intended to prevent any future planning process from including district-specific standards and guidelines that build on or override the citywide standards and guidelines. For example, this approach is anticipated for the Nerf, North First Street Urban Village Planning Process. Next, please. As a design standards and guidelines document, the matter before you would not change in any way the zoning ordinance, the general plan allowable land uses, densities or floor area ratio. It would not modify council-approved urban village plans or specific plans, not change requirements related to accessory dwelling units, public safety, homelessness, or affordable housing. Regarding community engagement, staff followed council policy six dash thirty, the public outreach policy, to inform the public of the proposed project. Community meeting and public hearing notices were posted on the city website and sent to interested stakeholders on the project list. Staff also reached out to council offices and publicized the project at the department's developers and contractors roundtable meetings. Draft documents and staff reports have been posted on the city website, and staff has been available to respond to questions from the public. Staff engaged multiple stakeholders, including San Jose residents and business owners, developers, architects, environmental advocacy groups, and, uh, the Santa Clara Valley Transportation Authority from October nineteen to December twenty twenty to receive input and comments. Uh, three community workshops were held. The first was held in October twenty nineteen with approximately thirty residents and stakeholders attending and participating in a brainstorming exercise to develop values and guiding principles for the document. The second and third virtual community workshops were held last July through Zoom. Approximately sixty residents and stakeholders provided comments on or asked questions about the draft document, which was first published on the city's website on July seventh, twenty twenty. Some community members and design professionals provided additional comments after the workshops. And staff held a focus group meeting, uh, in July twenty twenty with over fifty-five developers and designers. The project included two planning commission study sessions in July and August, and two historic landmarks commission study sessions also in July and August of twenty twenty, during which commissioners asked questions and provided comments, in addition to comments from the public. Next, please. The planning commission heard the item January twenty seventh, twenty twenty-one, and recommended the council approve the new standards and guidelines. Changes since the hearing were in response to a letter submitted after the, received by staff after the planning commission hearing from David Baker Architects on behalf of the Santa Clara County Housing Authority. And we have addressed those comments, uh, and as detailed in the council memorandum. This concludes the staff presentation. We'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Tim. All right, let's go to the community first for questions or comments. Ryan Darby?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thanks.
Okay, I'll be, be quick. Um, Mayor, um, thank you for all that you're, you're all doing, like you're always staying up late. Uh, and Mr. Jones, thank you too, not to be, I appreciate what you did for us in the park, and all of you did. Uh, if, if there's any way to incorporate into this, um, private, uh, you know, the way the new innovative housing, the way people are building, um, housing out of different types of materials, uh, just thinking, not even thinking outside the box, just get rid of the box. I would really hope we would do that. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, after what happened in Texas, you're absolutely right about private companies owning, uh, utilities. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Now, Paul Sardum?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm reading the memo from, uh, that was produced by the planning commission. There was three people that made comments. Um, one was, uh, concerned about native plants. And, uh, Dev Davis says council member Davis had called for urban greening implementation, and that the committee recognized the benefits of nature's and birds in the city. Nothing about human beings. And so, um, the planning commission is stacked with four members from the most redlined district in the city. Meaning that four people are using and exercising power that has historically been from an area that has continually exercised power over Chicanos, Latinos, and low-income, uh, uh, disenfranchised Anglos. So really, um, I mean, it's, it, this is really getting, it's getting grotesque in the, uh, into the meetings and these memos.
Thank you. Robert Reese?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening, and I want to thank council member Arenas and Director Huey for meeting with community members to discuss the issue. One of the things that has happened in Evergreen over time is that there's been a little bit of confusion with respect to working with planning on maintaining hillside views. And also in reading this report, there was some difficulty with respect to engaging with, uh, the planner working on the report. Uh, as I was trying to do so, I had been retold several times that they didn't apply to Evergreen and didn't apply to the Evergreen specific plan. I think we got that worked out, and I think that there are some good hillside design elements within the, um, draft that came out this year. The other thing I wanted to say is that, uh, the study really didn't give consideration to large parcels. Uh, there's three categories of parcels. The largest is one point seven. I don't think it's entirely plausible that the design standards for a one point seven acre parcel ought to be the same design standards for a three hundred and seventy-eight acre parcel. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sandra?
We've been involved with the city and Evergreen, Evergreen Valley College in the twenty-seven acres since two thousand and fourteen. I appreciate the strong relationship with councilmen or councilperson Arenas and Director Huey in District Eight in these last several years. We do not want to go back to square one with the current recommendations on the citywide design guidelines on Evergreen Valley College's twenty-seven acres. We want the planners to take into consideration views and landscaping in the future planning and projections for an extremely large parcel greater than one acre. This suburban rural neighborhood that has extremely large parcels in Evergreen needs to be fully considered for creative design solutions. Community input in this design and planning is required and needs to be included in the, in the citywide design guideline. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Shani Kleinhouse?
Good evening, Mayor Liccardo and City Council. This is Shani Kleinhouse from Santa Clara Valley, Odebon Society. I wanted to thank staff for reaching out to us and asking us and, uh, for our input on various aspects of the plan, landscaping, bird safe design, lighting, other things. I really do appreciate their work on this and support the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Shani. Uh, Brad Bigman?
Hi, uh, just try to, to try to offer the facts that I've been learning about this sort of situation. Uh, in two thousand and nineteen, uh, pre-COVID, there was a really good, uh, VLI, ELI, and mixed income ideas that were growing under, uh, CASA ideas, uh, among other things, CASA housing advocacy. It's now two thousand, uh, you know, twenty-one, we're going through a COVID area, uh, era. Um, you know, we're not talking about terms of, uh, reimagining equity. And that, that has to be, uh, included in a future report, you know, two years down the road, you're going to have to redo this report and to include those really important terms to the future of housing and what it can do for local neighborhoods. Uh, and, and VLI, ELI, and mixed income can do incredibly great things now, too. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Wesley Lee?
Hi, uh, thank you for taking my call here. Um, yeah, I'm, one of the things I'm concerned about is, um, the planned development overlay over a normal development. Um, one thing that's happened in the Evergreen Valley College twenty-seven acres, uh, was that there was a planned development, and I'm concerned about these types of, uh, I guess a zoning on top of a zoning, which may allow for things outside the normal development, um, planning process there, such as higher building heights, um, different setbacks, uh, obstruction from hillside views. And so I'm really concerned about, um, planned developments, you know, that are going forward in here, and I would hope that these would be very, um, discouraged, and people would be using the normal, um, design standards, you know, going forward. Uh, yeah, thank you for my call.
Thank you. Uh, Daniel Reyes? Daniel, we're not able to hear you.
Guys, okay. Uh, my name is Daniel Reyes, resident in the Evergreen Valleys in nineteen seventy-three. I have seen the vineyard and apricot orchards disappear north and south of my residence. Evergreen Valley community appreciates council members in the arena, working with our community in San Jose Evergreen Community College District. Our community has been vigilant on how the twenty-seven acres will be eventually be, be developed and appreciate Chancellor Byron listening to our concerns. The design update causes confusion after all the previous work our community has been involved with the college district. We will continue to be on the alert that our community interest not being in the back of the bus as decisions are made. Thank you and be safe.
Thank you. Okay, let's return to council. Councilor Arenas? Councilor Arenas. Councilor Arenas, if you're trying to speak right now, we're unable to hear you.
So sorry, I just having a bit of trouble with my with my my computer. So thank you, thank you for for your patience, Mayor. I do want to thank my community who's called in, who's made time in their day to express their their love for open and rolling hillsides as well as their concerns. We always want to make sure that we acknowledge those concerns and that we address them as best as we can. And so think, I think, I want to thank all of you. But I know that there's a very special group here that they're part of the District Eight Roundtable Land Use Committee in my district. We we have this subcommittee in our District Eight Neighborhood Association. And so they keep track of a lot of what we do here, despite, you know, us not knowing this. And so they've been looking forward to these design standards and guidelines. And so I I do want to clear up some misconceptions as Tim expressed earlier that these standards and guidelines are just that, you know, they're not changing a zoning ordinance. It's it's not for general planned land uses density, like it'll create more density. And so and it doesn't change any urban villages or specific plans. We don't have this specific plan. It was retired, completed long ago. We have the development policy at the currently. And we're really not meant for growth out in District Eight. And and so one of the things that I wanted to make sure is that this was very clear to my community that we are just as protective of the hillsides. And so I wanted to ask some questions because I know that there are some special considerations that were made for hillsides and slopes. And those were included in the final draft of this. And it was really through community feedback that led to those considerations. So I want to ask Rosalyn a couple of questions or or maybe Tim. And then let me back up one one second and just say thank you also to Rosalyn, Tim, and Leila, who were working on this for a really long time. We've all been looking forward to these design standards and guidelines for some time now. So thank you for all your hard work for meeting with our community and putting their concerns into into these standards and guidelines. Rosalyn, I think you're here.
She is.
And you can tell me, oh, there you are. Tell me, Rosalyn, whether this is more appropriate for for Tim. But, you know, I really just wanted to just right off the bat, because I did, we did get a letter, I think it was from Berg and Associates, and they were concerned that we might be changing zoning ordinance. I already said it, you said it in your presentation. And so we are not changing any zoning ordinance, correct?
That is absolutely correct, council member.
I'm just gonna beat a dead horse, I'm sorry. Sorry, everyone. These are the times where I feel really awful for those horses or this particular horse here. Okay, so the second thing is, could you could you go over some of the special considerations that were provided or integrated into the guidelines and standards here for, you know, the rolling hillsides, the slope piece? Could we you go over that just a little bit so that our community can hear as well as our colleagues this this special consideration?
Sure, so as part of our outreach and and Tim mentioned, we we did outreach to architects and design professionals throughout the city to get their input. And we did get a comment about view sheds and hillsides. And perhaps, Tim, if you do want to chime in to to give more specific information as to how we included that comment in the document.
Certainly, thank you, Rosalyn, and thank you, council member. In response to community comment about views and hillsides, we decided to go back through the old guidelines and scour them for applicable language that we could incorporate into the new guidelines. So that was sort of the primary inspiration for the additional guidelines and standards that were added, which we adapted to reflect today's environment where our standards have to be objectively worded.
Great, thank you, Tim. And as you heard, my community, and not only in this public comment segment, but in previous meetings that you've had with them, you know, they're very concerned about some of the undeveloped sites. We have, our our district is huge, right? And so there's some undeveloped sites there that my community has, you know, rightfully so, concerns about. Would you explain why you picked the 1.7 acre as a cutoff for small and large sites? And what's the distinction that makes that a helpful cutoff?
You want me to take this, Rosalyn? Great, thank you. So staff and consultants looked at San Jose's prevailing block and lot patterns and typical building footprints for different uses and identified 75,000 square feet, which is equivalent to about 1.7 acres, as kind of the minimum threshold for sites that are large enough to typically require their own internal circulation network. So for these sites, there are a few additional standards and guidelines related to service and utility areas and pedestrian access to common open spaces, essentially because there's more room to accommodate these kinds of features within the site on larger sites. For any large development with internal circulation, staff and applicants work with other departments, including transportation, public works, and fire to ensure that the onsite circulation network meets all applicable city standards and policies, including the complete streets standards and guidelines.
Thank you so much, Tim. Did you want to add anything, Rosalyn?
No, Tim did a great job answering.
He always does. Okay. And the following question is, can you talk a little bit about the concerns that you heard today and and in previous meetings regarding, you know, some of my residents' concerns about the setback requirements? I think you heard a little bit about it the other day, and Wesley mentioned just a bit about that. So and you know, this is an assumption that I'm making, that this would not be applied blindly, that there's very much an exception process where it makes sense. So if you take, for example, Capital Expressway, it wouldn't really make sense in terms of setbacks. Would you, could you share a little bit about how that would get handled?
Certainly, council member. Specifically with regard to setbacks, the minimum front, rear, and side setbacks are established by the zoning code. So this these guidelines would not change that. The new guidelines do include standards for building placement, which call for a minimum percentage of ground floor building facades that face toward streets or open spaces to be located within five feet of the minimum setback or easement line, rather than being set back behind parking lots, for example. So there's one percentage for primary streets and a lower percentage for secondary streets. And this standard implements General Plan Major Strategy Number Six, Streetscapes for People, as well as General Plan Policies for Community Design and Vibrant Neighborhoods aimed at creating a safe and comfortable environment for people walking and taking part in public life. The General Plan identifies Capital Expressway as a Grand Boulevard and includes policies calling for cohesive and architecturally distinctive urban development along Grand Boulevards with wide, comfortable sidewalks and harmonious building scale features. Now, every site has unique constraints, and the citywide design guidelines before you do include an exception process for unusual conditions, which is similar to that for the downtown guidelines, and it's spelled out in your resolution and the Planning Commission staff report attached to your memo. So applicants may request an exception to one or more design standards based on physical constraints and unique situations of the project site that make it infeasible to comply with that design standard. The decision maker, which could be the planning director, Planning Commission, or City Council, as applicable, will consider that request and the information provided and make findings to approve or deny the request.
Got it. So, you know, and I I want to just share in terms of an example that for me, just around a corner, I live off of San Felipe and Yerba Buena, there we have a little shopping center that has a CVS and a Starbucks and a Le Balange. And as you walk on San Felipe, you know, the 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 Le Balange is set back about, I don't know, 15, 20 feet. And I've always like thought, gosh darn it, why couldn't you put a door on the other side of this? So we could have like an easy entrance, thinking about the pedestrian, thinking about the folks who actually walk through the neighborhood, right? And so I think it would change that particular accessibility for pedestrians, right? As well as the Starbucks that's right next door to it, it wouldn't have this little small parking lot in front of it. It would have the Starbucks in front of it and then the parking lot behind it, right? Obviously, you know, this is San Felipe and Yerba Buena, certainly not Capital Expressway, this Grand Boulevard. I didn't know it was referred to as Grand Boulevard, but I will now refer to it that way. So so it makes a huge difference, and I and I completely understand that. So, excuse me, just my last question is, and this is about master planning. There was some concerns in in some of my residents' comments about master planning. I I started my term when 27 acres was just voted in December of 2016. I obviously, you know, started January of 2017. And, you know, together with my community, we did integrate and we demanded for that master planning process from that developer. And we we got pretty far. You know, there were other circumstances that kind of put a stop to that project, but it's nothing to do with with this particular process or any planning for certainly. But could you talk about the master planning process for large site works? Because I want it to be clear that that the sites in in DA, you know, although they're huge, they're not urban villages. And so there there, you know, there's no exception here. And that these larger sites, you know, if 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 deemed and gone through the right appropriate planning process, that they would also be subjected to a master planning process that would engage our community and that these guidelines and standards wouldn't be enforced before they, the community, was engaged.
Sure, council member, that that's correct. So as you mentioned, in Evergreen, there are several large sites that have not been developed. And actually, per the existing policy that actually wrote the task force, General Plan Task Force, made a recommendation to City Council, will be bringing that later this spring regarding transition, that policy. I mean, currently, there's not a path for for major development. But at such time, the council wants to consider development on those major sites. Absolutely, they would be a master planning process. There would be significant community engagement, similar to what we do for for urban village plans. You know, you're probably thinking about the former golf course site that actually is not even in the city limits currently. So if if
just as an example, right, because there's no
clearly, just as an example, I know also that the community, they've been following Reed Hill View, right, in any future development. And again, we know that's years and years down the road. But, you know, any future development on big sites like that would, of course, have to have extensive community engagement. And as a part of the process, we would want to come up with design standards and guidelines, right, that address that specific area. We want to take a look at that area in that context.
Great, and so this would come come after once the land use was determined, after zoning, after a project is submitted, or maybe a preliminary, right? It to to adhere to standards and guidelines, but not to sidestep any any community input or engagement. And so just trying to make it one more, one more time, just, I want to just assure my community that this is not an attempt to have a cookie cutter standards and guidelines for all, you know, of course, with some exceptions because of land size and and, you know, whatever specifics, other specifics, that there might be some special considerations. But this is not a cookie cutter nor for for large or small or medium sized land. It is an attempt for us to update a policy that hadn't been updated since 1997. And of course, our city looks quite different than it did in 1997, which is a great thing and and probably because of you and your department and leadership that's been here in the past. So those are my comments, and that's why those are my questions. Thank you just one more time, Rosalyn and Tim and Leila, for all the work that you've done. And I know that there's folks behind you as well who work really hard in putting this all together. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Rosen, I just had one. Is it a I know you've you, we've talked about this, but that that commercial site on West San Carlos that's a block away from Safeway, where I'm trying to remember the name of the chain store, and it has like no windows and no doors.
Final, that's on the corner there.
Mayor, yes. Can we be assured with these guidelines, we'll never see that again?
That is absolutely our goal, Mayor, with the design standards and guidelines, absolutely.
Amen, okay, I'm for him, you just convinced me. All right.
We approve the end of the city standard, San Jose Design Standards and Guidelines.
Okay, we do have a motion, don't we?
Did someone move it already?
I'm sorry, can I ask everyone to mute, please? Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, I don't remember if there's a motion, but I just wanted to piggyback on your comment, Mayor. Rosalyn, does it require that they be actual windows as opposed to appear to be windows?
Yes, council member, yes.
Thank you. And I, and since I have the floor, I just wanted to thank Shani Kleinhaus for for her comments and her letter and her support of urban greening. That's a really important piece in the the parking garage design guidelines and making sure that if the the top floor is not being used for parking, that it has green elements in it, I think is a really important way to, again, combat, we've been talking about this a little bit, combat our heat islands and to further our urban greening initiative. Thank you.
All right. Did you make a motion there, Councilmember Davis, forgive me?
I didn't know if there was a motion, if that, I think Councilmember Cohen made the motion, so I'm happy to second it if there hadn't already been one.
Okay. Councilmember Cohen has been attributed to be the maker of the motion. And so he objects, we will vote on that motion.
Menes?
Yes.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Asparza is absent. Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we're gonna return to item 6.1. We have heard public comment on this item. It's, this is the Preliminary Forecast of Residential Garbage and Recycling Rates. Any comments from my colleagues?
Yes, Sam, the order is Councilmember Mahan, Cohen, and then Arenas.
Okay, there we go, Councilman Van.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. And sorry, I'm just context switching, let me remember my notes. I want to, I want to first thank my colleagues who co-authored a memo, and that is Mayor Liccardo, Vice Mayor Jones, and Councilmember Jimenez. I also want to thank Councilmember Carrasco for joining in with her memo. And there may have been another that I missed, I apologize. But I think, you know, to simplify things, I think we all are very sensitive to the fact that this rate increase, especially when coupled with the proposed water rate increase, has the potential to create a real financial hardship for many in our community, for our working and even middle-class families in our community who are struggling with high housing costs, with loss of income due to COVID, the things we've we've all been talking about for a long time. So I think from Carrie's report, the, I think we're pretty aligned here. It sounds like staff does plan to come back, but I at least wanted to just emphasize the need for really investing in in an under deep understanding of every possible lever we might in a deep understanding of every possible lever we might have for mitigating cost increases. I also think, as Carrie mentioned, it's really important when we do notice the public, and I don't know if we'll have an opportunity to weigh in on the language, but I just think it's critical that we communicate to members of the public that the rates are not final and we are working to try to mitigate the impact. So I know we're going to circle back on a lot of the substance of what we might do to reduce costs, so I won't give a long speech here, but just wanted to make those high level comments and move the memo written by the mayor, vice mayor, Councilmember Jimenez, and myself, which would direct city staff to come back during the budget planning cycle with a report on cost mitigation and make sure we have every possible lever for discussion. Thank you.
All right, motion and second. Thank you. Councilmember Cohen?
Yes, thank you. First, I want to start with a question for Carrie. You know, it seems to me that we're, a lot of this cost increase is due to the fact that a lot of people are at home right now and are working from home. So I'm curious what you think might be the effect, you know, when people are getting back to work and aren't at home? Would we expect that the garbage volume would begin to decrease back to some other kind of steady state? And would be, you know, these cost increases might not be the long term normal?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the question. Certainly, COVID has created a lot of unusual conditions in our community, but most of them not positive. And this is one of them, you know, with everyone being at home instead of work, kids being at home instead of at school, the garbage and recycled materials that they would normally dispose of at those locations are all being placed at the curb in San Jose. So the way we restructure the contracts is that we sort of share the risk with the contractors. And we did that intentionally to kind of keep our initial prices down. So if the contamination is high in the recycling cart, we pay the haulers more. But if we can drop it down, we pay less. And integrated in those contracts is we do the same curbside audit every two years. So every two years, we get a check on how we're doing. And if we're doing well as a community, drops down. If we're doing not so well, as we saw this last fall, then rightfully, we compensate the haulers more because there's more material they're having to sort through and then put in the landfill compared to the valuable recyclables they're contracting to collect. So yes, I do think it would change.
So this twenty-one percent increase, that obviously, that twenty-one percent would be full cost recovery without any of the mitigations that we're talking about. But that twenty-one percent is the level that assumes the current level continues? Or is it some assumed, what is the assumption going forward as far as the level of collection that will happen next year when kids are back in school and people are not necessarily following the habits they're following now?
Right. So thank you. So this rate increase is generally divided into three components. There's the deferred rate increase that we pushed out last year, so that's about a third of it. And then a third of it is related to contamination. Then about a third of it is the normal cost of living increases and the new levers in the new contract. So what would happen two years from now if we do, ideally, we do the curbside audit, contamination is below now, then we would pay the haulers less than today. So I can't forecast, it's not like we'll pull back on the twenty-one percent, but the increase would be less than it would have been had there been more contamination.
Okay, so I just want to, so this is why it's really important for us to potentially tap into coming. We're hopeful that Congress and the Biden administration will come through with COVID relief package. And that's why, to my mind, it's particularly important for us to use that strategy in this instance because we don't really know what the steady state is going forward. We're in an unusual circumstance that isn't going to be happening moving forward. And so I think we ought to be focused on that solution as a primary solution in terms of this increase. And I also want to point out that what concerns me a lot is that I think what we're getting is a cost shifting from a lot of our large businesses as well. Because I assume that many of these businesses have actually saved money on garbage collection as their employees are not in the office and they're not throwing out garbage at work and they're not eating in cafeterias at the offices. And so what's happening is we're actually paying for their garbage collection and they're not paying. And so in some sense, we're taking on the burden of a cost shift from what they would have been spending and we're paying it for them. And I'm uncomfortable with the idea that we'd be passing on a large increase in garbage rates to our residents in an environment where many of our businesses are probably not spending, you know, the money on their garbage collection if they were under normal circumstances. I don't know if you have any comment on that.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. And I agree with that. But I would also suggest that the same is true for electricity. People are paying more for that because they're home more. And people are paying more for water because they're home all day and using water. So this is just one of the many things that go up in terms of household expenses when, you know, your family's first forced to quarantine. Not that we've experienced that before, but what was unexpected, and that's where we articulate in the memo, our desire to go after some federal funding because we are framing things up that this is related to COVID. We know San Diego and Houston have done the same thing successfully. And so we think that that's a good option for council consideration during the budget process.
No, I mean, I agree with you. Obviously, this one, we have, we as a council have more control over these rates than we do over how much electricity or water people are using at home. So that's why I'm bringing this out. And clearly, you know, we can't, we have, we have, we have less ability to, you know, solve those other problems here than we do, than we potentially do to try to find ways around some of the increasing the rates. It's one thing, we don't necessarily charge for garbage usage the same way we charge for other utilities, but I understand what you're saying. That's true. But the cost shifting is a concern of mine. In the memo that I wrote on this topic, I just want to point out, you know, I'm concerned about the solution, the proposal to weaken environmental standards in our garbage collection. So I, you know, I think it wouldn't be a good idea for us to say, let's divert garbage directly to landfill and not do the, and not, and reduce our potential recycling and give up on our, you know, on our goal of diverting from landfill and getting more things to compost and recycling. So I would hope that that would be not something that we would, we would consider as one of the solutions. Although the other things in your memo, in your proposal, all I think are reasonable solutions using federal COVID aid. I do think that, you know, the large item pickup question is one that we ought to discuss because, yes, we're having more large item pickup. But I wonder what percentage of our residents are really using more than two large item pickups per year? I suspect most residents are not using any. And the idea that we're subsidizing, that many of our residents would be subsidizing the few residents who are doing more than two large item pickups is something that we could potentially, you know, give up for some period of time. And so I recommend that we ought to seriously look at that one. And is two, three item pickups should serve most of our households, I think. But, you know, I mean, we, so that's something I think we should look at seriously. I also think that we ought to take an equity lens in the rate increase and explore how we can create potentially an increase based on household income rather than a one size fits all approach if we're going to do an increase. But so we ought to, we ought to really consider, you know, a zip code based or household income based increase as opposed to a one size fits all increase for all single family homes if it comes to having to do an increase next year. So those are all things that were in my memo. And I don't know whether, you know, it's necessary for me to try to amend the motion to add some of those things, those notes of mine into the motion that Councilmember Mahan made. Or if it's, you know, just worthwhile to have my interests out there, but, you know.
Councilmember Cohen, if I could just address some of your suggestions, which are wonderful suggestions. Unfortunately, and I'll ask the city attorney to chime in and add some detail or correct me if I'm a little off. Unfortunately, our rates are subject to Prop two eighteen. And Prop two eighteen requires that we charge everyone equally for the services that they receive. So we're not able to provide an equity lens. And additionally, these rates are billed and paid for by property owners. So renters aren't paying these rents, or these rates. Only the property owners are. And then rent control does come into play in terms of how those costs can be passed on. So there is a bit of an equity lens in the existing framework. And the reason, a bunch of years ago, we moved to property tax billing is it saves us one to two percent in the rate because we don't have those ongoing transactional costs. And in this year, for better or worse, we're very fortunate to have had it on the tax full billing. Because when I look at the outstanding that our Muni Water Enterprises experiencing, we would have also likely been experiencing similar unplayed debts. But unfortunately, with the garbage, we lean people's properties if they don't pay. And so we're not able to provide an equity lens for the rate increase in terms of garbage. But as Lee Wilcox and I have been talking, you know, if we look at it kind of in a broader pie, we can kind of speak to how we are helping with an equity lens in other programs. Lee, did I, or Nora, did I miss anything?
No.
No, I don't think you did. You know, some of the other cities that have done this, Councilmember Cohen have done it through residential assistance programs, similar how we have rent relief. So while we can't do it through the actual fee program through Prop two eighteen and those bills, we, if we were to receive additional federal funding, we would stand up an additional function in the EUC similar to rental assistance where we could be much more focused around those in need. And as Carrie has mentioned, there's a bunch of caveats there of the way that it's billed and how property owners are assessed. But those are things that we can look into and pull from how other cities have done this work.
Rachel, anything to add on rent control?
Um, thank you. Yes, hi. I would just say that, you know, our rent stabilization ordinance limits the amount of, the amount that rent can go up each year by five percent. And so, so when a landlord is looking at increasing the rent for a new, for the coming year, they will have to be limited by that. And so I just think that's just an important thing. It also creates stability for our residents who are living in our rental properties throughout the city and just ensures that, you know, they don't have sharp increases which can lead to displacement.
Right, makes sense. Thank you. But thank you for the clarification. It's important for us just to be cognizant of how this is going to affect people. I do, I do, I do want, think that we ought to be trying very hard not to be passing on these huge increases at a time like this and all of the methods that we can come up with. Although, like I said, sacrificing environmental quality of our recycling program. And I give our, your department props for how well our system works. And I don't want to sacrifice that quality as part of this, you know, at a time like this. I mean, our need to continue to do what's right for the environment doesn't change. And so that, to me, that should be, you know, that should be one of the solutions that's not on the table, but the other solutions we ought to be considering in order to figure out how to, how to get through this and figure, and see what the long term garbage rate, garbage usage will be as people get back to more of a normal.
And thank you, council member. I just wanted us to share a little bit. So you knew, we heard you and very much aligned on the equity front.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carrasco?
Mayor, I was next.
Oh, you're right.
No, it was me.
You were one of the original folks raising your hand. So let's go to you, Councilwoman Rice, and then we'll go to Carrasco.
It's me. We always are told that we look like each other.
Well, no, actually, she had her hand raised and she was at the top of the list. That's why I called on her.
No, she's meaning that we are interchangeable at times.
Yeah, well, she's also at the top of the list. That's why I called her.
All right, well, I'm going to move on. You know, I want to thank you, Councilmember Cohen, for some of your ideas. I know that not all of them, you know, are going to work out because we just can't charge some residents more than others. But I appreciate your consideration of some of our lower income families, how this is going to hit them, right? They're not living in a multi-housing complex, but they're living in a single family detached home. And even though they're overcrowded and living three families at a time, and, you know, or more, this is partly why I'm guessing there's a lot more trash. And maybe a lot, and I'm not sure why less recyclables, but that might be part of the educational piece that I know that we had discussed previously when we, when we talked about this subject and partnering up with schools and really making our children, I've said this before, making our children do the right thing, you know, they always remind you when you are out of line, you're not following the rules. They're really good at that. So anyways, I go back to that because I think that's part of investing in our next generation and then continuing to educate and bring those folks forward who might not be in the know. One of the things that I was wondering is, instead of just waiting until there's, you know, federal emergency relief funds, couldn't we, because I think in, I think it was in your memo that you could use a partial use of operations and maintenance reserve. Could that be something that we could do sooner than later? Because, you know, we want to make sure that folks, the other option would be like, make trash cheaper, right? Make the trash pickup cheaper, which I know is not an option. But people aren't upgrading their trash receptacle. So, you know, so what do we do? I think, I really love the idea, Lee, you said, you know, there could be a resident assistance program. I just don't think that we need to wait. It's an urgent problem now.
Thank you, council member. And we have been working with Jim Shannon on seeing how, where is the level we're comfortable bringing, bringing some of those reserves down. And we'd like a little more time to think about that, but certainly we will bring ideas to you before we've noticed our community. And so we are looking kind of at all of those options so that we don't put a high number out there that we never intend to raise rates to. But at the same time, you know, we don't want to put the fund at risk. I do think that our garbage and recycling rates are very competitive. And I do think that they are, they are inexpensive when you consider that we pay living wage. And I think that social responsibility is who San Jose is. And we knew it would cost a little bit more to do that, but all of the workers in our system are getting paid, you know, a living or prevailing wage. And so we are the only city that we're aware of that does that, and we're pretty proud of that. So kind of working both ends of the equation, although, as I said earlier in the, you know, the tail end of pandemics, not the, not the time to, you know, be comfortable with cost increases. So we acknowledge that and we'll bring forward some ideas. But yeah, we're very sensitive to the needs of the community and that every, every dollar does make a difference. And we definitely share your concern in that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you so much for that consideration. I know that we have higher standards, environmental standards, we have the living wage standards. And we are all very supportive of that. We don't want to retract any of that really good work. But, you know, this is an issue that's been going on, not just during COVID. It's been in, you know, for the several past years in which we find that where there's more overcrowding, that we just find, you know, mixing of the recycles with trash. And so I don't know that it's just a piece about education, it's a piece about need. And so, you know, just with that, I, that, you know, in my comments, I think you already know, Carrie, it's a problem that we needed to fix before the pandemic. I think pandemics make it just worse, right?
Yep. And council member, we agree with you. And we are, we are a little behind because of COVID. But we are working on some, some new ideas that we'll bring to council that could just have a flat rate and then have you get the size containers that you need. And so we're working on bringing those forward because we really saw, as we articulated, the memo really saw during COVID, nobody upsized. Well, we know there's a lot more material. And so, you know, that just tells us that just about teaching you what goes in the cart. It's about making sure there's room in the cart as you, as you.
It's about making sure there's room in the cart as you've, as you've, um, reminded me of many times over the years. So, um, we are working on it. We're just, uh, we're a bit, bit slower due to COVID.
No, I, I'm, I'm absolutely grateful. And I know that you've already done, um, a one-time reduction last year, which was absolutely needed. And thank you for that. Our residents, uh, don't know, but I'm, I'm sure that they're just as grateful not to have that fifteen percent, um, instead of the nine. So, so you, you do wonders and I look forward to the future wonders, uh, Carrie. Thank you.
Well, council member, that, that rate relief last year was actually our haulers. So they, they gave money back. And, uh, so that's, uh, that's just the great partners we have in, um, Green Team, Greenway, C W S, Garden City. So they were super helpful.
Well, it's their wonder, but now, now it's our wonder that we're going to have to. Yeah, no, that, that's absolutely fabulous. And thank you for pointing that out because they, they sacrificed on their own to bring this to our residents. Absolutely, um, much needed. Thank you so much for that reminder. I had forgotten. Those are my comments. Thank you.
And we can ask council member Mayhem if you can include some magic rabbits, uh, so you can pull those out of the hat. Or define this. I know this is a hard one, Carrie. I really appreciate, uh, your team's work. And, uh, council member Carrasco, you've been very patient. Thank you for allowing me to go to council member Arenas, who apparently had raised her hand in the very first round before we continue. It's council member Carrasco.
Oh, no worries, Mayor. Uh, uh, council member Adenus and I enjoy when we're interchangeable. We always joke about that. Uh, but, uh, you know, uh, what I wanted to say is, 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 I think just the obvious. And, and, uh, and everybody has already stated it in one way or the other. Uh, it, uh, my biggest concern is just, uh, the, the toll that this is, this is, uh, having on our residents and, and really on our, on our most, uh, on our most, uh, affected residents. I think all of us have been impacted one way or the other, but especially those who still, uh, are struggling to get back to work or who finally are getting back to work, uh, and are seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. And, um, and to just, uh, uh, you know, slap them with an increase in whatever utility, whether it's, uh, whether it's, uh, you know, a, a rise in, uh, in, in P G and E or a rise in cable or a rise in suddenly, uh, water or whatever it happens to be. I think it's just, it's rubbing salt in the wound and I don't know if they can handle anymore, um, anymore, uh, difficulties in their lives. And so I just want to, uh, rattle off a few statistics that I heard this morning at the state of the valley. Uh, some of you were there, uh, listening to, you know, I'm always fascinated by the numbers that they, that they, um, report out at the initial, and, and at the, uh, uh, when the pandemic was first reported out and the economy was first shut down, four hundred and fifty thousand jobs were lost, uh, two hundred and fourteen thousand jobs were regained. Um, and of those, uh, it was reported that approximately twelve percent, uh, in the valley was our highest unemployment rate ever to have been reported in the history of Silicon Valley. We are now at five point nine percent, which is, you know, pretty darn good, given, given the fact that it's a pandemic. But that's really the folks that can, you know, continue to work from this little tic-tac-toe board. Uh, those who are in the service industry, hospitality, who work in hospitals, uh, who are, uh, you know, still working in, uh, as janitors, as custodians, salons, retail, they're still struggling. And of course, you know, the district, uh, that I represent and some of the pockets that all of you still represent, those folks are still having a very difficult time. So twenty-one percent, uh, it may not seem like a lot of money, eight dollars. I think it was something like that. Doesn't sound like a lot, but it's a lot when you add everything else that people are struggling with. So, uh, so I just, uh, hope that, um, uh, when staff returns, we really do find ways of mitigating these additional hardships. The one thing also that I want to, uh, ask about, and I want to ask staff, is, um, uh, council member Cohen brought up one of the ideas that, that I find really interesting. It's the big bulk program. Um, my children would love for me to use it more. I'm a little bit of a hoarder because, uh, uh, my mother left me a lot of things. And so it's difficult for me to part with some stuff. But, um, but I, I see my neighbors using it quite a bit. And of course, uh, everybody's kind of emptying out, uh, things right now while they're home. I think because people just suddenly realize that they have more than what they really need, which is good. Um, we, we've struggled a great deal with blight, illegal dumping. Uh, we haven't been able to get quite a handle on all of that issue. Uh, we thought that having unlimited pickup of, uh, bulk items would be at least a partial answer to it. Uh, Carrie, is there any way of knowing or having some sort of understanding as to who's using it? And whether or not this would, uh, create additional, uh, uh, burden on our streets? I mean, have we seen an alleviation of, uh, of illegal dumping since before it started?
Uh, thank you, council member. Um, you know, in the early part of the, um, unlimited junk pickup, we thought we saw it trending in the right way. And then as, um, as COVID hit, um, I think all bets were off. Um, but we do know kind of there are not super users in the community. So there's not a couple of people that are using it, you know, fifty, a hundred times. Um, generally, people are using it a couple of times and it certainly is not every household in the city. In the rates, every household pays about thirty dollars to access unlimited junk pickup. Um, in most other cities, a single pickup, it costs about that thirty dollars. Um, and so we'll relook at the maps and see where the use distribution is. Um, our hope is that this is offsetting costs that, um, some households of, of all incomes would otherwise have to pay, um, someone else to, to take away for them. And so we do think it's, it's a bargain, but we also understand that, um, if, if it's something we want to change, um, you know, that's certainly something, uh, that we think is worth discussing. But it is not something that we can toggle up one year and toggle down another. Um, as we finalize contracts with our hauling partners, they either have to buy equipment and staff up and kind of be ready to take a lot of material or, you know, they need to kind of stay at the level there are. But it's not the kind of thing we can move up and down every year. Um, having said that, if we want to lower it one year, I, I'm confident our partners can agree to, to sort of go back to unlimited, you know, in a, in a year or two. So I do think there's a little bit of flexibility, but it can't be the lever we pull all the time because it's also, um, very expensive for us to get messages out to the community. So if all of a sudden we change it to it's not unlimited, um, there's just going to be a lot of confusion from the folks that have gotten used to it. So, uh, like many things, good and bad, uh, to either way we pick.
Yeah, the, the, the only, the, the, I guess I have a couple of concerns in terms of changing that program. One is that we've invested so much in, in getting the community, getting our residents in the city to know that that program is there. And, uh, and especially for, you know, districts like, uh, seven, five, uh, I mean, thirty dollars is a bargain. And I know that, that some folks end up subsidizing other folks. I get that. But, but, um, but, uh, even my staff, I mean, we've just worked so hard to get, uh, our residents to know that that program is there. I mean, it goes out in my, in my Facebook. It goes out in my newsletter. Uh, we send out the, uh, letters personally to households informing them that this program is there. Uh, I know that it's out in billboards. It's out in, um, um, V T A announcements. I mean, there's been just a lot of investment to try and get people, uh, to understand that it's there and it's for their use. And it's, um, and, but at, at the end of the day, I'd like to see whether or not it's, it's actually made, uh, a dent. I would hope that it's made a dent in, um, in the illegal dumping, which is what we wanted to have done at the end of the day so that we wouldn't have to constantly be running around picking it up off the streets and off of people's sidewalks. Uh, so I, I would just be concerned of taking that program away uh, and then having to rev up again and, and, and trying to convince people to, to start using it. Uh, so, uh, uh, thank you so much. I know that everybody's very sensitive about, uh, about raising rates of any kind and putting undue, uh, burden on our residents. And I thank you all for, for, I thank you all for your very thoughtful memos and for your, uh, very kind consideration of, uh, of, of, um, truly the lived experiences of our residents right now.
Thank you, council member. And since two council members have commented on it, I will point out, council member Carrasco really did have her hand raised. She was at the top of the list. That's why she was called. Uh, council member Cohen.
Hey, Sam, uh, I just want to interject that, uh, you can blame the vice mayor for the transition.
I will blame the vice mayor. Thank you, vice mayor.
I always use that as your fallback.
Thank you. Uh, council member Cohen.
Just one quick question on that large item pickup. I guess just to follow up on that, on that. Um, the question for me, I mean, it's in addition to how much blight has it prevented, is really how many people are using more than two versus using two. It's not a question obviously of, of whether the large item pickup is used. But let's say ten percent of our households are used, or twenty percent are using one, ten percent are using two, and maybe half a percent are using more than two. The question will be, you know, how much does it cost all of our residents in order to pay for going beyond two? And maybe, do you know the answer to that? I think you said in your memo, how much are you, did you call, how much would it save us?
We, we do have it, but, um, but unfortunately I don't have it, um, in my brain right this minute. But, uh, but we will get you that information and, um, and certainly bring it in April and, and council member will get you that, um, next week.
Okay, yeah. And it's, and, and again, if it's, it's for me, actually, it's been interesting to learn how few people, even though they have access to one free pickup. And I know that maybe other council members have done a better job than the previous council members in my district have done, letting people know. Because that's been one of the first things I plan, you know, one of the things I'm planning to do is let people know they even have access to one pickup, let alone unlimited pickups. Um, because I think in our district, people don't even realize they can do it one time. So, so it's possible that it's just been a difference in communication in different districts.
And my, my understanding of, um, kind of the cost impact to the program is if that we reduce it, it saves about a dollar a month.
Okay, so it's twelve dollars a year. It may, may or may not be significant, but in the context of all this, we have to. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Actually, Carrie, a dollar a month is pretty significant, given the eight-dollar month increase that would be expected otherwise, right? You're talking about.
You want me to do the math? It's, uh, Jim Shannon, can you do the math?
So, twelve percent of the total increase we're talking about.
Yeah, right. Yeah, that's not a bad place to start. Um, just to build on that, because that was the first thing that popped in my head. Do we have any idea what percentage of residents actually use the service more than twice a year?
We do. We have all that data and we'll, we'll compile that and, and get that out to you all. But because we have looked at it to see are there just a couple of power users that, you know, are basically running a business and, and, you know, getting rid of, uh, get rid of things and it brings things home, et cetera. And we really haven't seen that, but we have it broken down.
I just found it, there's this stuff, my, my garbage and my neighbors, uh, uh, well, anyway, that's, I guess, probably a bad time to mention this on public, uh, TV. Yes.
Can I just, can I just ask the question, besides that, that info, do you have it up by zip code or, or demographically? Like where the, those power users are?
We, we don't think there are power users, but we do have, we do have a distribution across the city. And so we'll, we'll share that with you because we've looked at it a bunch of different ways to make sure it still makes sense. Um, I do think it's, uh, um, the fact the uptick, uptake in use is just a real testament to our communications team in the department that have really worked hard to, to get the word out, as you all have noticed, uh, noted, to make sure we were doing everything we could to, uh, sort of recycle the most material, but also, uh, avoid illegal dumping where we could.
Okay, so all that information will be coming back. Thanks, Carrie. Hey, it seems like, uh, with this big shift, everybody, lots of folks being home, uh, there should be a much lighter load on the commercial haulers. Um, and I know it's not, uh, for us to be able to shift burdens, uh, because I know that every, uh, the law is going to require us to make sure the burden is only commensurate with the actual use. But is there any, is there any net benefit we can pull out of the commercial hauling savings to the city or to anyone else that, that can be used to offset the costs of the residential side?
Well, unfortunately, um, unlike in, in, um, our residential, um, solid waste program, every parcel has to have service.
Right.
In the commercial sector, they can turn it off or on. But if they have it on, they have to use our franchise hauler. So what we've seen, um, during the last eleven-ish months is a lot of businesses have either reduced service or, um, canceled and paused service. And so what that means is our commercial hauler has a lot of assets that are being underutilized. And, um, and so I don't expect there to be savings. I actually expect them to have, uh, some revenue, uh, some increases needed to meet their revenue requirement. Um, certainly, you know, we can, we can talk to them and, 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 um, see if they're seeing it differently than we are. But, um, but we think that COVID has been, uh, been hard on the commercial sector as well because the businesses just aren't prescribed, just aren't subscribing to service.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate your clarification. Okay, any other comments? All right, let's vote on the motion from council member Mayhem.
Hi.
Prowlis.
Hi.
Hi.
Carrasco.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Arenas.
Yes.
Ollie.
Hi.
Hi.
Jones.
Hi.
Hi. Okay, uh, so that brings us, I believe, to ten point four. No, I'm sorry, eight point two. We have not gotten to eight point two. That's a very big item.
Actually, Mayor.
Eight point one. Let's go back to eight point one. It's getting a little late, folks. All right. Uh, eight point one is affordable housing and sustainable communities round for loan and grant for Ballback and, uh, the associated transportation related capital improvements. And thank you, staff, for your work in getting this grant money.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, a motion from council member Prowlis. Are there any comments on this item eight point one relates to the Ballback loan and grant? Brian Darby.
Um, any money you can get for affordable housing is greatly appreciated. Thank you to the staff for all the hard work, for the leadership. And, um, you guys, uh, watching you ladies and gentlemen on video, um, you guys really care and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Mr. Beakman.
Hi, thank you. Sorry if my words are a little strong last item. I'm really hoping, uh, you know, the ideas of reimagine and equity can really help shape the ideas of, of housing and, and, and planning ideas for the next few years. And by two thousand twenty-five, you know, there should be some really interesting ideas of, uh, reimagine, uh, of local neighborhoods with housing and planning. For this item, uh, you know, uh, I remembered the term from another item that land trust issues. That's the term that I was trying to say that I couldn't say before. That's an important concept. And I just wanted to, uh, again, remind, there's really good ideas of, uh, uh, V L I, E L I and mixed income. You know, those are my three terms. Uh, they're, they're really interesting. And I just personally feel it's a much better way to gauge ourselves and, and judge how to build our future as opposed to starting from a top-down approach. I think we should start from a bottom-up approach and, and work from the bottom. And that's how you develop creativity and good thinking. So that's why I talk about, uh, these things the way I do and why these ideas feel so good. And they are so good. Uh, Cass is really good too. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. All right, let's return to council. Any comments, questions? All right, let's vote.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Carrasco.
Hi.
Davis.
Hi.
Arenas.
Uh, sorry, tell me if you're calling me. Oh, yes.
Ollie.
Hi.
Mayhem.
Hi.
Jones.
Bye.
Hi. Okay, now we're going to eight point two, actions related to the amendment of the inclusionary housing ordinance. I want to thank everybody in the housing department, uh, Jackie, Rachel, everyone who's worked so hard on this very difficult, complex, challenging effort. Uh, Rachel, did you want to lead off or Jackie?
Jackie will lead off. I'll go ahead and clear my screen.
Great, so, um, my notes say good afternoon, but I'll say good evening, Karen council members. My name is Jackie Morales Ferrand and I am the director of the housing department. And as the mayor has already stated, I have with me Rachel Vanderveen, who is our deputy. And as the mayor has already stated, I have with me Rachel Vanderveen, who is our Deputy Director of the Housing Department, as well as Deputy City Attorney Shasta Green. Excellent. So the we're going to come before you to show you the ordinance. We have two different resolutions as well. Next slide. So the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance, also referred to as Inclusionary Zoning, is a land use restriction that requires developers to set aside a certain number of units for moderate and low-income households. The amended ordinance will provide developers more flexibility and additional compliance options for developments to move forward. The purpose of the ordinance is to increase the number of affordable housing units in the city in recognition of the lack of existing affordable housing units in relation to to the city's current and future needs. And it's also to provide an opportunity for new affordable housing units that are constructed and distributed throughout the city as part of mixed income developments, so that the benefits can flow from economically diverse communities and be shared more equitably. It also begins to address historically segregated areas. The Housing Department has showed has shared this red lighting map of San Jose a couple of times. It's dated 1936 to 1939. Lines and colors were coded areas that determined which areas in the city would receive federal mortgage guarantees from the homeowners loan corporation. But it was not only lending and real estate practices that created segregation, but another factor has been our local zoning laws, which limits where multifamily housing can go. Developers also build homogeneous neighborhoods, creating homes and apartments that are only affordable to a narrow band of incomes. Inclusionary housing is one tool that requires a diversity of incomes when an onsite compliance option is selected. With that, I'm going to have Rachel walk you through the some of the proposed changes. And again, I wanted to remind you that the council already saw these changes in November of 2019. We are simply bringing back, simply bringing back the ordinance, which now has the changes that you all directed us to include. Rachel, take it away.
All right, thank you, Jackie. So the first portion of the ordinance that we want to outline as a policy change and recommendation is that the applicability of the ordinance will apply to developments with 10 units or more. Additionally, developments with 20 units or less that provide 90% of the allowed density for the site will be allowed to pay half of the fee that they would typically owe. The Inclusionary Housing Ordinance requires new residential developments to build 15% affordable housing units on site. As you can see in the middle column here, what we have done in our proposal is to break that 15% down into 5-5-5. So each category is broken down, and what we are allowing is for a developer to provide 5% at 100% AMI, and then five at 60 and five at 50. What this does is serves a wider range of income levels, and it just provides more flexibility and options for a developer to choose how they want to move forward with their obligation. Additionally, we are also allowing a developer to provide 10% at 30% AMI, which is our extremely low income level, to meet their obligation by providing those units on site. For the off-site compliance option, we're also recommending providing a wider range of income levels. As you can see here, we're recommending that it be 5% at 60 AMI, 5% at 80, and 10 at 50. The new ordinance outlines a new methodology for calculating the in-lu fee for the inclusionary ordinance. As we applied this new methodology in the ordinance, the in-lu fees for rental housing may have been set as much as $68 per square foot and for sale $32, $34 per square foot. After we considered what these recommendations would be, also considered the current economic situation, what we decided to do is bring forward a recommendation that is consistent with the city council's direction in November of 2019, which is that strong market areas, the rate be $42, $43 per square foot, and moderate areas be $18.70 cents for rental and 25 per square foot for for sale. Our new methodology also provides variation based on geographic areas. This is a new concept that we are bringing into the Inclusionary Ordinance. This is something that we would like to have be a consistent measure for the development fee framework, which we're working on, which will allow variation in fees based on different market areas. And so as you can see in this map, the West Valley and Central have been identified as strong market areas, and the other, all the remaining areas in San Jose are moderate areas. The ordinance proposals also allow a mixed compliance option. The city council approved the creation of this alternative option back in 2019, which will encourage some affordable units to be built on site, and then payment of the payment of in-lu fee may may be made in combination to meet the obligation under the ordinance. Additionally, the new ordinance will allow what we're calling clustered affordable housing on site. The Inclusionary Housing Ordinance has an alternative compliance option to build affordable units offsite. And in the past, how that's been, what, when this has been proposed, there's been a requirement that 20% of those units be built. So this proposal, as you can see on the right-hand side, will allow the the units to be to be considered on site at the 15% requirement when they are clustered on a adjacent parcel. We've done research and have learned that when we're creating affordable housing, when we allow affordable housing developers to partner and leverage financing such as tax credits, this provides an opportunity for the affordable units and for their residents to be located in the same area as the market rate developments, which have access many times to better schools, amenities, parks, transportation, jobs, all within the same neighborhood area. And we have found that there are long-term benefits for low-income households, especially children. And so that is why we feel that this is an important policy to bring forward. I would like to, let's see here. Oh, sorry. There. Okay, sorry, my slide was stuck. What we'd like to do is provide an example, a real-life example of what clustering looks like. And so in San Jose, actually entered into an agreement with Hitachi, you know, several years back to build market rate housing and affordable housing. And in this case, what happened is the the affordable housing was clustered into the ascent project. And you can see the La Moraga site across from it, which is the market rate development. Here's a picture of what these developments look like today. And what we think is interesting is that the ascent includes 200 units of affordable housing. There's 67 units for very low income, 100 for low, and 30 for moderate income households. What's what's really beneficial or interesting in this case is that this affordable housing is built in a really vibrant area with retail and a park, transit, all in walking distance from the site. And it is an opportunity for low-income families to be a part of this exciting neighborhood. Another one of the recommendations we're making in this ordinance change is to extend the term of affordability from 55 to 99 years. This will ensure long-term affordability for the affordable housing that is created under this ordinance. We are also recommending an operative date of May 1st for the ordinance amendments and for the new fee schedule. Developers may choose to come under the new Inclusionary Housing regulations and fee structure if they meet the filing following criteria. If they have planning permits before May 1st, but their building permit has not yet been issued and they have not paid any in-lu fees, then they can reach out to the Housing Department and submit a new, an update to their affordable housing compliance plan and come under the new provisions of the ordinance. Additionally, we wanted to make it clear that the Affordable Housing Impact Fee, which is a separate program that applies to rental projects with three units or more, will sunset and be moving forward. We will just have the one Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that will apply to all new development, all residential development in San Jose. So moving forward, we will combine this all just to the one program, just to simplify and clarify our policy direction moving forward within our city. All right, and from here, I'm going to turn it back over to Jackie.
Thank you, Rachel. So in terms of our next step, if we have no substantial changes are made tonight, then the second reading will occur on March 9th. Again, the operative date is May 1st. And then in May 2021, we will suspend the Housing Impact Fee in our guidelines and will return with a resolution. I also wanted to clarify that before the end of the year, the Housing Catalysts team will return with an updated report on the cost of residential development. And so that will give us an opportunity to relook at fees. Next slide. So I did want to thank the entire team, which has taken a village for us to make these changes. I wanted to highlight Tina Vo, who's our Development Officer, who runs the program on a day-to-day basis and was instrumental in helping us to move this initiative forward. And of course, our attorney, Shasta Green, who we couldn't have done any of this work without her assistance. So with that, we are open for questions. So thank you.
Thank you, Jackie, and thank you, Rachel, and thank you for acknowledging Shasta. I should have acknowledged her at the beginning. Thank you very much for to the whole team for your hard work on this. Let's go to the community first, and then we'll come back to the council. First, Jesse O'Malley Salis.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jesse O'Malley Salis, and I'm VTA's Transit Oriented Development Program Manager. VTA appreciates the early engagement and discussion with the Housing Department provided through stakeholder and community dialogue on the proposed amendments to the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. Earlier today, we had submitted a letter requesting additional clarification change. VTA is comfortable that in-kind contributions are intended with the language as drafted by staff. We are supportive of the amendments in the IHO, and we urge council to approve staff's recommendations. Thank you all for your work.
Thank you, Jesse. Pat Saseo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pat Saseo with BIA Bay Area. Thank you for this opportunity to address you. The BIA is very concerned and opposes the recommendation to raise the in-lu fee on market rate multifamily rental to $43 a square foot, which is significantly higher than any of our neighboring cities. Currently, the IHO park fees and construction taxes make up 60 to 80% of the city's fees and costs to permit residential development. With the continued trend year over year of fewer and fewer residential building permits being issued, now is not the time to approve policies structured to disincentivize investment in home building by the private sector. You know, BIA really encourages the council to not raise the in-lu fee at this time, but rather look for additional ways to incentivize investment that ensures financial feasibility for new residential development, as delineated on page two of the BIA memo. Again, thank you for the opportunity to address you.
Thanks, Pat. The person on the phone number, 8357. Welcome.
Yes, this is Paul Sucker from the Horseshoe. I grew up two blocks away from this structure. I'm really, I'd really like to hear from the council members. If there ever was a time when equity needs to be applied, it's in this particular situation in terms of what that looks like and how that's defined within the context of city government business. I want to hear from every single council member or not hear from them, because your silence would say something. This is very important, because Jackie used that redlining map in order to leverage power and sympathy. And we have not even, as a city, come to terms with the redlining consequences that have happened, and neither have you, Liccardo. We talked about this at Conexorn. You admitted. I've got it on tape. You said flat out that you understood the historical injustices that flowed from those redlining maps. So I want to hear what you got to say.
Brian Darby, welcome.
Yes, thank you for all your hard work. The other gentleman that just shared about the redlining, I don't fully understand it, but I under, it was terrible. And it's been, it's locked out many people in this country, and he had some good points. The little side, it's interesting watching the council and listening to Moody Blues and Mystery Science Theater at the same time. But I have to tell you, anything that gets some affordable housing, and I, how do I say this? The developers aren't our enemies, and Mayor Liccardo will know that that's hard for me to say, because I used to think that they were my enemies. And Eric and a lot of other people had, you know, they were, they're, they have one side, we have the other. I don't know how to work together on this. I do know that we need more affordable housing, and redlining did happen. It's a fact. In some ways, it's still happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Matthew Reed. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. Matthew Reed from Silicon Valley at Home. I'm I'm here to support the adoption of the amended Inclusionary Housing Ordinance as directed by City Council in 2019. We believe that while the new policy is designed to reduce the effective inclusionary fees below levels necessary to replace the units that would not be built, the policy amendments were designed to respond to a challenging building environment and to council's dual directions of getting more homes built on site and responding to the challenges of building moderate income homes. The amendments explicitly incentivize the construction of 5% of the units affordable to households with incomes at 100% of the AMI in return for deep discounts in fees. We acknowledge this is a a complex time, and we support the intent of the memos from from the Mayor and Councilmember Mayhem. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Griswold. Welcome. Melanie, if you're trying to speak right now, your device appears to be muted.
Thank you. My name is Melanie Griswold, and I'm Senior Counsel and Development Director for Republic Urban Properties. With my limited time, I want to highlight two benefits from the new clustered option. First, by allowing market rate developers to contribute pre-development costs for affordable housing, it shifts the financial entitlement risk and capitalization requirements to market rate developers. The VTA Blossom Hill Station and Tameen Station Projects are two examples of this at work. Both have significant affordable components, and in both projects, the affordable developers have not had to come out of pocket for any of the combined $5-plus million in pre-development costs so far. Second, unlike in-lu fees that are not project-specific, with a contribution option, the market rate developer is highly incentivized to ensure that the affordable project will actually be built, lest they not receive any credit for their contributions. We believe that this new option will result in affordable housing, and we support the proposed IHO. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland, welcome. Roland, we're not able to hear you right now. Roland, we're not able to hear you.
The issue's on his end, Mayor.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. I couldn't tell. My screen was freezing because I wasn't seeing the time move. Okay, Roland. There appears to be a problem with your device or perhaps the software. So if you're able to fix that, give it a shot and raise your hand again and we'll come back to you. Let's go back to council for now. Questions or comments? I am.
There are actually some more hands up in the public that somehow disappeared for a minute.
Yeah, they all disappeared and then they went back up. Let me, let me come back to them. Thank you. I didn't understand what was going on. Okay, let's go to the person with the phone number ending six two six two.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Roland. Yes, there are some kind of problem with Zoom here. I'm going to be very brief, but unless I'm missing something. Inclusionary housing and in lieu fees is some kind of oxymoron. So what I would really be interested in is basically forgetting about the new fees. And having some kind of in-kind agreement whereby, you know, the developer writes, you know, whatever square footage for. Affordable inclusionary housing and that basically is my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Veronica.
Great, thank you. And thank you. For bringing back up because twice I've been missed already and I'm not sure what's going on. But in this comment in regards to this inclusionary housing ordinance. I'm really, really wondering where is our racial equity force? I know that. They were training with GARE, which I'm very familiar with GARE because I was trained on their GARE. And for those of you that don't know, GARE is a. Racial Government Alliance on Race and Equity. And so I really want to know where is GARE playing in this? And two, I also want to know how are people, how are people that are doing this ordinance? Embollicating people that have been underhousing. I've lived underhousing and I know. And I have my own experience and how are they getting a voice? Okay, because it goes from here to, okay, we're giving, you know, people somewhere to live. Or are we actually following up and seeing how, what their experiences are like? Something to really consider. Again, where is that racial equity committee that was built? I want to really see it at work in this situation.
Thank you. Paul Ring.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Paul.
Super. Thank you. I'm a partner of Urban Catalyst. We're focused on tracking investments in San Jose and have several projects addressing housing. We're very interested in the IHO being successful. Looking forward to it being improved and passing quickly. We've submitted two letters, one on the twentieth and another one this evening as we've been continuing to review the latest information as they're coming out. I just wanted to highlight two points for you. First, recognize that the effective fee is increasing by fifty percent in the base case, by fourteen percent in our best case with moderate units onsite. Is very dependent on the market rent, how you calculate the impact. Second, the late breaking details of the ordinance matter. Onsite affordable units pay fees to automatic annual increases for inflation occur. Fifty-five year land restrictions can outlive the project. Appreciate your consideration and thank you.
Thank you. Eric Shanour.
Good, good evening, Mayor Liccardo, members of the council. Eric Shanour. I represent a number of projects. We like the recommendations of the staff that will incentivize the actual production of affordable housing. Within larger developments. And, and we think the recommendations do that. The one item that we were unclear on in the staff's presentation tonight was. Was the, the pipeline projects. They said something about. A develop, a development permit being achieved by May first in order to utilize these new policies. So if they could clarify that and hopefully the council will allow any pipeline project. Especially those of us who are waiting for the urban village plan at the Berias Bart Station to, to move forward under these provisions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tim Bobian.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council Members. Tim Bobian, representing the Santa Clara County Association of Realtors. SCORES supports the staff recommendations of the changes to the inclusion, inclusionary housing ordinance fee policies and structures. We thank city staff for their work on this item and council for initially directing them to alter the IHO policy. The proposed changes take a step in the right direction to help create new housing developments, especially during. Uncertain future economic conditions. Moving to a square footage fee, aligning payment with certificate of occupancy and creating different fee schedules and differing development zones throughout the city. Will all help lower overall costs of housing developments, increasing supply and helping the city meet Rena goals. We applaud the emphasis and changes to encourage onsite affordable housing units and market rate developments. This will allow for more diverse, inclusive and equitable housing projects, which is the ultimate intention of this policy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jeffy Buchanan.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Certainly today, we, we all know that affordable housing is, is healthcare. It's, it's crucial right now in the pandemic as we think about what, what having a, a safe home means. So doing everything we can to provide affordable housing is critical. We are concerned as working partnerships around particularly the mixed compliance option. That spelled out in the reforms and encouraged the, the city to continue looking at ensuring when we set out in this process, the goal was not to. See fee reductions and even in the places with the hottest of markets we're seeing with this mixed compliance option. We could, you know, significant reductions in the fees that the city would be receiving, even in downtown and West San Jose where. We can expect the most lucrative of projects. Additionally, would encourage the city to, to think about. Not pursuing, looking at extending the downtown high-rise in zero dollar in lieu fee program. Beyond the downtown core at a time when public dollars are so important, when we have so many families that are in need. Spending more dollars on consultants to look at reducing fees for developers seems mistimed. So it would encourage the council not to pursue those additional. Feasibility studies to expand that program.
Thank you. Okay, let's return to council. Another couple memoranda included and. Maybe I'll come back to speak to mine after we had several colleagues chime in. Councilmember Prowess.
Thank you, Mayor. And appreciate staff as was already pointed out and I really thank you for, for all the hard work. To get us to where we're at today. This has been really obviously a number of iterations of our IHO and, and trying to get to something. That achieves really difficult goals. And I think Roland actually just, just said it pretty well. And how inclusionary housing and in lieu fee are essentially an oxymoron. But the reality is, is indeed that we've been trying to strike a balance for years on how to incentivize. Affordable housing development without disincentivizing development altogether. And, and really. And in lieu fee should not be something that is so easy to just pay. It should incentivize someone with, or developers, excuse me, with the goal of trying to include. Housing, affordable housing onsite or in this case clustering within the development project. And I really. Appreciate the creativity in the work again that staff has put into to, to get us to this point and this direction that we have here. When IHO first, or when it came to council, actually in 2019, staff stated that all but one recent project. Had selected the in lieu fee option. And this is likely to be the case for nearly all upcoming projects as well. And that was, that was back when this came in 2019. As we, you know, consider the fee. Which was decided upon back in November 2019. I'll reiterate again that this is not something to be used to opt out of a building for the housing. Our, our main goal again is to try and encourage. The actual production of affordable housing units. We know that as we collect the dollars to build these units, we then still have to go through. Lengthy processes to actually build affordable housing versus having a developer as they're proposing their project and going through the motions themselves to actually include it. Within or on their development site is, is really the fastest way that we can try to do it. And, and quite frankly, the, the, the most integrated. They can actually build a diverse community of all income levels. And, and that's what I'd like to see more of and hoping that this. This, this new iteration of IHO will, will help inspire that. I did have a question. I was meeting with a, a number of individuals prior to today's item. And bless you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And meeting with a number of individuals as well from the development community and there were a couple of questions that were coming up. One of them was in regards to clarifying on the guidelines, what would count as credit. And I want to thank staff for clarifying that in your supplemental memo. Another request from developers was in regards to credit. If the, the inclusion of ADUs or essentially dwelling units. Could count as well. And I wanted to see if staff could, checked in with staff on this already. But I wanted to see if staff could answer that here in regards to. Why that could not be the case.
All right, I can jump in on this one. Rachel Vanderbein, Deputy Director of the Housing Department. I think what we, first of all, I want to say that. ADUs as a, as a new type of housing are included under the inclusionary housing ordinance as are all. Residential dwellings that are proposed to be built. So I do want to just state that first. And then second, I think it just depends, it really just depends on what the proposal is, right? So let's say that there's. Under state law, it's very interesting, the different. Makeups of, of like an ADU proposal there, there can be. So there could be like a ten unit ADU. There can be. You know, there can be ADUs that are just different than what people may imagine. And so we're going to take a look at whatever the proposed development is and then figure out how the inclusionary project applies to that. So, but let's just say that there's a, a proposal where. It's going to be like multifamily housing and then the affordable would be like ADUs. I don't know, maybe on a separate parcel or something like that. We would want to look at that and we would just want to make sure because even in, in our clustering proposal. We need to have like units, right? So we don't want to have the affordable units be something different than what the other units are. And so. So I think we would just really have to look at the proposal and see how it works out. And there may be ways for that to work or there's ways where it wouldn't meet the minimum criteria if the units in some way are. Different than how the market rate units are built. So I hope that answers your question.
Well, then essentially you're saying it, it could count in certain circumstances?
I think again, it depends what, what are the mark, like the market rate units look like? And so, once we understand what that is, then we can determine if the proposed affordable units would meet the requirements of the ordinance. And I, and I think the other challenge is when we typically think of ADUs, you know, I'm imagining there's secondary buildings on some other parcel and that. First parcel, you know, who's controlling those ADUs? Because the first parcel. May not agree to what this ADU weird requirement is. So. We just really, it just seems like something we're open to thinking about it and seeing what the proposal is and how it would actually work. So just on a practical matter, we just need to understand how it would work. And we would want to make sure, you know, again, we typically think of ADUs as one bedrooms. And if all the other ones were three bedrooms, we certainly wanted, wouldn't want to accept just all ADU one bedrooms as the affordable housing proposal. So. We're open. It just, we need more context to really understand how it would work.
So would there be? Would there be future analysis that would have to be done that would then update the policy to, to then include ADUs? Or essentially what you're saying that already would be concluded and it would be something like a case by case basis that we would analyze that to determine.
It might be time for the attorney, perhaps. Hi, Councilmember Varellis. Good evening. I know I'm, I'm just a blank. Sorry, my camera is DOA. So ADUs are covered. There are type of dwelling unit that is a dwelling unit subject to the inclusionary ordinance. And when we look at providing ADUs or any kind of other unit to satisfy the build onsite or the clustering. There are a set of existing standards in the ordinance in section four seventy and it's just things like. The quality of exterior design shall be consistent with the exterior design of the market rate units. You know, basically saying these are functionally equivalent. So you know, there can be some variance, but they would be functionally equivalent to the market rate units that they're serving. As the inclusionary for. And so whether there are ADUs or not, that applies to all inclusionary units. I hope that answers the question.
I guess. Unfortunately, what, what, what I was at least hearing from, from the development community and then now I am, I'm going to echo it is, is it. You know, confusion in regards to, or a lack of clarity, right? In regards to what might qualify, especially around ADUs. And I will be frank, no, it didn't help. I don't have any better clarity. I don't have any better clarity from your answer. So. Is there something that would? I guess that would need to, at least if we can answer this, is there something that would need to be included into our ordinance? That, that would, that would, you know, allow for ADUs to be qualified or? No, are you saying, look, it's already sort of there. It just depends on a number of other factors and, and really it's, it's again, kind of case by case. That's what I'm hearing is.
It is there. They're counted as units. It's just as we were thinking traditionally an ADU is an accessory to some other building. It's just hard for me to imagine. What is that other building? It is the accessory dwelling unit for and how is it different or similar? And so it just needs to have things like similar, the bedroom counts have to be, have to add up and, but you know, that's the. For any developer who's trying to provide the inclusionary on site, there are certain factors that we're going to walk through to ensure. That the affordable again are not all, you know, SROs if everything else is three bedrooms. You know, again, unless there's some extenuating circumstance, but so it is a dwelling unit. It is, it can be, it is counted and they can propose it and we just have to see how it fits within. The overall residential mix.
Okay, appreciate that. And if there is any other further sort of confusion, I'll be sure to direct them your way. And so with that, I will make a motion to approve the staff recommendation. And I will include Councilmember Mayhem's memo and. Recommendation number one, A and B from, from the mayor's memo, but excluding number two.
Back on.
And that's it, Mayor. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Mayhem.
Thanks, Mayor. And thank you to staff, city council, current and, and past members and all the outside stakeholders who have been part of the conversation. I know there's a lot of history here and I'm relatively new to the conversation. I, I was hoping first Jackie or Rachel, if we could just clarify, I know there was public. Comment to this effect. Could we just clarify what exactly the May first date would, for lack of a better term, grandfather in?
Yes, I can, I can, I will take my first shot at it and Jackie can clarify. So. A development, okay, so basically there, there are actually developers on either side of this who, there are some who are interested in coming under the new provisions. And there are others that are interested. And there are others that are interested in staying under the old provisions. So I'm going to explain each of them kind of one at a time. So for those who are interested in coming under the new provisions. On May 1st, the ordinance will become operative. And what that means is that if there's any new development that comes forward after May 1st submits a planning application or whatever. They will come under the new provisions. For anyone who's already entitled, and this can happen where they're entitled. But now they're interested in coming under the new, even though they may have already completed an affordable housing compliance plan. Which describes how they would have met the obligation. They can come back in and reapply under the new, as long as they haven't already pulled building permits. Or actually paid their inclusionary housing fees. So if they're in that, that window, they can come back and request to come under the new ordinance. So that takes care of people who are interested in the new provisions. And then for those who are interested in staying under the old. What we would need for that is that before May 1st, they would need to be, our proposal is that they are. Entitled, so they have their planning approvals are completed and they have entitlement prior to May 1st. So either they're already entitled today or they can wrap up that process before May 1st. And then they can continue to, they would stay under the old provisions.
Thank you. Okay, so it is entitlement. I think we might have used a different word in the, in the original memo. And I just wanted to clarify that for a public comment. Okay, that's helpful. And do you happen to know, do we have a measure of how many, I think you included this. But just remind me how many projects we have in the pipeline that are, that are kind of close to that May, or may run into that May 1st date?
We have, I'm trying to think, we have 10 right now who have, are in like some form of planning process. And have yet to pull building permits. So there's 10 projects right now that would fall right into that. And there may be others that are expecting to initiate their planning process soon. You know, that could add to that list.
Okay, and my understanding is you have been in touch with them about this potential policy? I mean, do you have a sense of how they feel, given that they're kind of midstream?
I mean, we've had some general communication, but after the action tonight, we definitely will reach out and communicate directly with. Those projects that are in, in that window between, you know, in their planning process.
Okay, great, I think that's important. I mean, I just, I would, I would hate for someone who's moving down the path, has already done some analysis, is in the process of lining up funding. To feel like they just missed the window and have to go back to the drawing board, may have a lot of extra cost incurred by it. I know it's never easy to implement a policy, but that, the period that we're allowing here for grandfather. And again, I need a better term for that, but that window is pretty short. I mean, we're talking about a few months, which from a development perspective is not a lot of time. So just, I guess, to finish that line of questioning, it sounds, have you heard any concerns about that window? From, from developers?
We've definitely had discussions with, with multiple developers about how it would work. We've also found that there are, again, there's some that are interested in both options. So, so I would say we've had, you know, strong interest in both staying under the current ordinance and then coming under the new. So we have had those conversations and we have, you know, reviewed different options. And we feel like this is our, our proposal that we are going to be moving forward with.
We have heard from a developer who has wanted us to extend the timeline. To, so that that developer could stay under the current ordinance. However, the suggestion was it'd be the planning application phase. So that's clearly not somebody that has been working for a long period of time in the planning process. If they are just submitting a planning application now. So as you know, it can take a significant amount of time to get through planning. So really, you know, this ordinance, the council made the decision in 2019. And so there has, it's not that there hasn't been an indication that the city was moving in this direction.
Right, right, that makes sense and thank you. And to be clear, I mean, I think, from my perspective, I think there are some really positive changes here. I know you've all tried to increase flexibility and I think, you know, moving to the square footage basis for the calculation. The recent addition of the clustered onsite option, differentiating by development zones, that differentiating the fee level. And then the shift in timing, I mean, those are, those are things that increase flexibility and show how you've been trying to work with the development community. I mean, the reason I raised the question and just kind of a general concern I have, which I'm sure not be new to anyone here is. Just that, you know, we are, we are taxing housing production and I just, I worry that the unintended consequences as we increase the cost here. Is potentially less overall housing stock. And I, I do think that every unit, every unit matters. Even a market rate unit means one less person competing for less expensive housing. It's just, it's a, it's a little, a slightly better balance between supply and demand. So that's really what motivated my memo. I appreciate Councilmember Peralis moving it. I think it's just really important that we continue to check in explicitly on our understanding of. How the market is responding to the policy and whether or not it's having the intended outcome. I think the, I get what we're trying to incentivize here, the kind of onsite or on-premise development of affordable units. And I think that's a very worthy goal, doesn't mean the market's going to agree. And I think ultimately there is some trade off here in terms of number of units that we probably don't want to make to achieve that goal. So I think it's, you know, it's a dynamic problem and I just think it's really, really important that we are checking in regularly and willing to adjust. If we're, if the incentives we're creating are not producing the outcomes that we want. I think I'm going to actually pause because I do really want to hear from the mayor on the components of his memo. Which we had at least one recommendation in common and the one that was, and then he had an additional one. So I'll, I'll actually stop there, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I'll go through the list with my colleagues and I'll come right back at the end. Councilmember Cohen?
Yes, thank you. Well, first I want to thank staff for all of the suggestions in this policy. It's a very complicated subject, a lot of pieces to put together. And I think there's a lot of positive suggestions. And you know, a lot of this predates me and a lot of these conversations predate me. And so I, as I was reading through it and trying to understand it, there's some questions I have about how this improves things. What make, you know, what are we trying to achieve and what, how do the numbers work? If I understand what the objectives are, obviously there's two objectives, one is to get more housing built, the other is to get more inclusionary housing done. And so I understand the incentive, how we're trying to get more housing built. But I want to try to understand exactly how we think the level of the inclusionary housing fees, the end-of-fees. Will incentivize more inclusionary housing itself. I know that the mix, the possibility of getting that reduced fee for getting 5% in there is a positive. And we also, the clustering might also help. But the fees, the fee level itself wasn't clear to me how that fee level. Improves things, other than the fact you're switching it to square footage. But the level, there's a, there's a certain level at which paying the fee is better than building inclusionary housing. So how do we know that we're at the right spot? I just want to know what, what our thinking is for that level.
I'll start and then Rachel can add more to that. So, you know, certainly when we re-looked at the fee level again. As Councilmember Peralis had suggested in his opening comments, the fee level actually had already been reduced by the council. To make it more affordable for the market rate developers. And so there is certainly this balance to even begin with, you know, the higher the fee, the more incentive it is to build onsite. So once the council had already decided we're reducing the fee, it somewhat tipped the balance of pay the fee versus building the units onsite. Because it was certainly less expensive to pay out than to build. Hence this next iteration that came out saying if we're limited to the fee that we were already provided, that the council had already capped on. And we're still trying to create more incentive to build, we have to think of more options. And so hence why we came up with the five, the five, the five and the five at 100, because 100 actually raised the AMI. And then the fee level was reduced. And it is close to what our include, our affordable housing impact fee, which developers were already paying. So we knew that developers were already willing and able to pay the fee because they were paying it on the affordable housing rental fee side as well. And so it seemed like the math would work, that 100% is closer to what their market rate rents were. It provides an opportunity for them to meet some of the inclusionary for an income category that we cannot produce housing for. As you know, that is one of the most challenging ones in the arena cycle. Because the person at those income ranges are too high to qualify for any of our affordable housing programs. So it allowed us to provide a housing option for an income range we can't meet. And I'll let Rachel add to anything that I might have missed.
So I mean, I think you just bring up a real challenge, which is just like, how do we, how do we, how do we create a framework? That results in the quote behavior that we're looking for. And that would be to build affordable housing, right? Because that's really what we want to see. And we want to see affordable housing development being built alongside of the market, right? We want to see it all coming forward. And, and so. We have had a lot of conversations with people, we've done a lot of research. We feel like this is a creative way to move forward. What we're doing is we're creating more choices, which we know people like when they're trying to make decisions. It helps to have options to kind of pick through. And so I would say that, you know, we're just very hopeful that we are creating more ways for a developer to choose to build affordable housing. Than they've had in the past. And I would also say that just based on conversations we're having with people now. Ever, because we've, again, we've kind of put these ideas out there for over a year now. We're having real conversations about, about both of these scenarios with different developers. We're having conversations about the 100% AMIs and we're also having conversations about the clustering option. And so I think we could immediately see that developers, instead of immediate, is, instead of having their first instinct to pull out the checkbook. Write us the check and just move on. They're actually stopping and having like some serious conversations with us to see if there's a way to make it happen. And so I think that in a way. Time will have to tell a little bit and see how, how people make choices. But I would say that based on the conversations we've already had, we are seeing more effort. To build the affordable housing than we did without these options.
So I agree with you, and I appreciate my colleague, my colleagues who suggested the evaluation and study. Because I think it'll be important for us as we go to regularly get a sense of, are we doing better? Because we know that for a long period of time, almost every project we were getting end-of-fees and weren't getting inclusionary housing. So getting that data as we go along will be important for us to know how well this is working. And you know, in an ideal, if we were close to the balance of supply and demand in an ideal economic situation. Just building more housing would do what Councilmember Mahan said, which is, you know, improve that curve and give us more supply, which would reduce the cost. But when we're so far behind in supply, we're nowhere near having enough that we're even going to get to that point where we can get affordability. So we can't just do it with increasing supply, we have to be building affordable housing. Otherwise, we're not going to increase, it gets to that affordability within, you know, unless we're talking decades from now. So it is really important that we're focused on both market rate and affordable housing in order to get where we have to be. So I appreciate that we're, that we're moving that attempt and I'm hopeful that this new policy will help us get there. The, the number of 15%, that, when we have 10 units, is that, we round down, is that one unit affordable out of that 10?
We actually use traditional rounding. So if it's, if it rounds like point four or below, then it rounds down. If it's point five, it goes up to a whole unit.
10 units would be two affordable units. I guess that was my question, thinking ahead to the mayor's proposal of lowering it to five units. I was trying to understand what, you know, what that looks like as far as how many affordable units or if the anticipation is for those cases. Most people would be then doing an end-of-fee, if there's five units of housing and the requirement would go down to five units. I guess that's a question for the mayor to address when he, I know inevitably will be bringing up his proposal coming forward. So I'm curious about what his thoughts are about bringing it down to smaller developments. I know there's a couple of developments even in my district coming forward in the next two months that are six unit developments. So I'm just curious what the expectation is about from this perspective of what those look like. So you can answer that when he, when he takes his turn and brings up his proposal. That's the end of my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Renice?
Thank you. I wanted to thank all the folks who called in. I know this is a really important item that, that many folks have been waiting. I don't know if tonight will be the complete conclusion of it, but certainly I think a very concrete path forward. And I'm, I'm excited about having mixed income developments throughout the city of San Jose. I'm not proud to say that in my district, we only have one real affordable housing unit. And that's next to the villages, which is a, you know, a 55 and over country club. The rest are, what we might call naturally occurring. And that's at our multi-housing complexes. And then some single detached family homes where people are just overcrowding. And this is nothing new, I know I'm not telling you anything new, but this is what my district reflects. And, and it also reflects the wrongs of the past. And I know that it's not, the wrongs of the past weren't exclusive. And Jackie, you talked about this, they weren't exclusive just to lenders and bankers, but also zoning laws. And so as policymakers, we're responsible for undoing some of those things. And this is our opportunity to actually really integrate, like I said, mixed income developments. Which means a kiddo who has a lower or middle-class family or a lower income or middle-class, middle-income family. Household has an opportunity to go to a different school district, right? They can have an opportunity to come to Evergreen, which I tout as a really good school district. Other people may not agree with it, but you know, whatever school district you think is, is, is attractive. They have an opportunity for that type of resource. And I've heard many of you, I think also you Jackie, in your own personal experience and many of us. That schooling made a huge difference in terms of our tracks and our future. And I, I just, this as an opportunity. Eddie, oh, you have your, your mute button. Okay. So I see this as a real concrete opportunity for us to have these onsite mixed income. This is, this hopefully will incentivize large developments to occur. And it's part of our policy to, to get them there, right? And to find what this sweet spot is, and hopefully this is part of that sweet spot. And we just need to give time for these policies to be enacted, to play out in, in the market. And then really evaluate, I don't know if three years is enough time, I'll be honest with you, to, to have them come back. I think Jackie, you've probably been working on this iteration for maybe a year and a half. From the last time that we talked about it. So, you know, Councilmember Peralis, I'd love for you to consider maybe in a, in the amendment, in the memo that has. A three-year check-in, that we maybe extend that a little bit longer. Would you be open to, to that? Raul, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here. So you're asking that the, the check-in be, what, at what length of time? Yeah, I'm here. So you're asking that the, the, the check-in be, what, at what length of time?
You know, I, I'd like to check in with staff to see what they see would be reasonable. I, I'm thinking instead of three years, maybe five. I am not, you know, I'm not trying to push this down the road too far. But I, I just think that we need to give it a chance to, and give it a go. I don't know that three years i- is, is enough time. Have it back, reevaluate.
I think, Councilmember, if you were referring to Councilmember Mayhan's memo, I think it actually was coming back in a year.
That, that's with a report, right? But, but I think it was, uh, let me see.
It was my memo you were referring to.
It was, yes, it was the mayor's memo that to reevaluate the IHO when related policies come to council in every three years thereafter. Maybe every three years thereafter, once we establish and have a good sense of what the policy is. I just think at the very beginning, I don't know that, that three years from now will be any further. Hopefully, I'll, I'll knock on wood that we're further than where we are today.
Got it. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy. I, I don't necessarily have a strong opinion on that personally. So I'm happy to hear from staff as well.
So the staff, part of our staff proposal is that we would come back every five years to do a relook at the fees. And so we could, I mean, certainly that it's appropriate to do a full report on the progress of the ordinance and how it's been working. Because you're really doing the whole, you're looking at the fees and, and we'd be looking at, did we achieve the results that we wanted to achieve? So the ordinance already can, considers that we would have to come back every five years to do a, a study.
Well, I think it, it would be a really good alignment then, Councilmember Peralos, if you agree.
Councilor Prus, could I, could I just be heard just as to why it is that way in the memo? Thank you. This is one area where actually the affordable housing advocates and the housing developers agreed. If you look at staff's memo, and, and they suggested three years. Because the reality is no matter where we peg this, it's either going to be too high or too low. We know that because we've got a very dynamic, fluid market. And, and trying to create a static model, which is what we have, and I don't blame anybody for that. We're doing the best we can to try to peg a very dynamic, fluid market with a fee. Means we know market's going to change. And I think there's a lot of apprehension on both sides, that it's either going to be too high or too low, or we're going to be stuck with something that we're going to regret. And, and I'm sympathetic to that sentiment. And it seems to me that three years is, is plenty of time to be able to give everybody clear expectations and have a clear sense that when the fee may change. And we all know that, you know, recessions and economic changes can, can happen very quickly and make fees look obsolete and either silly in terms of being too high or too low. And so it just enables us to, to be able to try to make a closer attempt to be, be more responsive to the market.
And I, I, I get that. And staff, just kind of curious because that, that did seem to come up from all advocates involved. What was the, the thought behind the five years timeframe?
Actually, the mayor hit it, which was when we first were contemplating the ordinance. One of the biggest concerns frankly of the development community came out with was, you know, the, the prior methodology, there was a new calculation every year. And it made the fee potentially could be very unpredictable had the council not put a cap on it. And so we wanted to create that stability and reliability that the development community wanted, which was you know your fees this and you'll know as you're planning what the escalator will be. And so it was really in response to ensure that the fee was more predictable than the previous fee was.
I, I, I heard that as well. I heard an interest from the development community to really want predictability longer term. So, and I, and I do also hear what the mayor's saying. So I, what I would be willing to do, that essentially the mayor in one A is, is returning first quarter twenty twenty-four. And then, and then that one B is suggesting every three years thereafter. I, I would, I, I would be comfortable with saying, let, look, let's come back a little sooner at the start here. But then, you know, that we should provide some, some stability. And so I would be comfortable then, Councilmember Renes, with amending that to the mayor's item one B to every five years thereafter.
Perfect. Yeah, I agree with you. I thi- I think in, in the beginning, maybe they want to do some adjustments. Although we are kind of in a, in a strange place in terms of this pandemic and the crash is not hit just yet for everyone. Anyways, I, I appreciate that. And I, I appreciate your consideration of smaller projects in a green for the ten. I think this was the ten that was provided by, or agreed upon by many of the developers or small, small project developers. And, and I, I just want to detail a little bit about why it's important to me in my district. And that's because, you know, my district has a huge, just huge, just single detached homes, track homes, that we don't want to invest in anymore. That we, you know, we, that's why my area is kind of a non-growth area. And we don't want to have this urban growth. And so when, what, what is left in my district, aside from these really large parcels that you heard about earlier, are these smaller infill lands that because it was too expensive for the developer to figure out. Maybe it was something geographical, maybe it was the mitigation for transportation. There was maybe some, some structural obstacle. There was just some, it just made it more difficult to, to develop. And so they just left it, right? I have a, a very good example at Evergreen Village Square. It's a lovely, you know, town feel, urban village. And then you get to one segment of it, and it's this big pile of dirt with the big, you know, like trash bag cover on it, and it's just terrible looking. And it, you know, it just has some issues that need to get resolved. And I don't want, and, and you know, there's not going to be a really high number of, of units. But I, I, you know, I, I certainly want to encourage as many units that you can, granted, if it's acceptable to the, the, the neighborhood, right? So, so anyways, I, I just wanted to put that out there. I wanted to thank you for, for not including that. I, I think this is coming from our small project development community. And for areas like mine and possibly some of my colleagues, it makes a lot of sense so that we can, one, start creating some infill and, and reduce blight, visual blight. But as well as maybe, you know, some, some opportunity housing, we just never know. And I know that, that the, the proposal is for five or less, I think coming from the mayor. But I'd like to see a little bit more in those areas that have some potential for more. And I don't want another fee or another obstacle from develop, from having those folks develop, which is, you know, environmental mitigation, just structural. They already have enough obstacles and that's why these infill spots haven't been developed just yet. And then a fee on top of that would just really discourage more infill development in my district. So anyways, those, I, lastly, I just want to thank Housing Department. Thank you, thank you. I know you've brought us, you know, from long, I, I can't even remember what year we started on this. But, but it feels really exciting that we're at this near end and that we can, we can sense that this is really going to change the way that our city looks. And for many communities, really right the wrongs of the past. And so I'm really proud to be part of this. I'm so proud that you're leading this. And then really give some, some satisfaction to many of our community members who've lived in, in red line communities, I, like myself, I, I did. And maybe it weren't offered the same opportunities as the rest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. First, I want to thank the Housing Department for explaining this really complicated issue. I try to understand it and I've heard the presentation over a couple of years. And it's just really complicated on how the numbers are affixed to the different properties and all of that. So thank, thank you for explaining it to me. I still don't understand the ADUs, but I'll try to live with the knowledge I've gained tonight and hopefully understand what that is over time. I do completely agree that having the clusters opportunity in the mixed income development is a huge benefit for all of those who will be involved. When we have those from different economic backgrounds live together in the same areas, that's important. And that creates a diversity of economics that lifts everybody up in the education that they can receive and the resources that they can receive in, in that community. So I completely support the goals of that. I have a question for you about the current projects that are in the pipeline right now that are not ready for entitlement. Do we have an idea of the number of projects that might be in jeopardy with this proposal? Or, or are we hearing from developers that they're fine either way? I'm kind of getting mixed messages from them. And what, so what are you hearing?
Well, I'm going to start and then again, I will turn it over to Rachel. Just more in the bigger picture of where we, we're at in, in the world of development. So again, because we have seen these decreases in rents, it is definitely more challenging to start a project right now because COVID nineteen. And so there are certainly larger developers who are, you know, have more financial resources and may not be relying on traditional financing markets that would have to prove certain, you know, in order to move forward with the rent, you have, I mean, in order, in order to move forward with a rental development, you have to be able to achieve a certain rent level. And because of the discounting in rents, developers aren't going to be able to achieve those. And so we're really having to wait through what the economy, how we recover through COVID to see when a traditional rental market will, when it will begin to recover. What we do know is that rental markets recover very quickly because rents are dynamic. They're changed daily. I don't know if you've, if you've gone to check for a rental, you will come in and they'll tell you, this is the rent today. It can change tomorrow because they have amazing technology that allows them to track rents dynamically. And so when the recovery starts to happen, it should happen very quickly on the rental side. And on the homeownership mark side, I think you know that that market has stayed frankly very strong. And in fact, has been appreciating through COVID nineteen as people have been looking for the kind of suburban feel that San Jose actually has. And so, you know, it's all individual on where the developer is and, you know, where their financing is. And with that, I will, so we've heard both, yes, we want the new one, we want to move forward and it works so much better for us than the old one. And then I think we've also heard some concern of, well, we don't know. And we, and, and actually, when pushed, it's we don't want anything. We don't want a fee, we don't want any inclusionary. So it's really not the new. It's we don't want anything because the, you know, because of the current condition.
Right, that makes sense. And, and rental prices, especially in the high-rise market, are dropping quickly. And as you say, we'll probably recover, but we don't know how long that will take for them to recover. And then the single-family residential market, that's a, it's, well, it's all supply and demand. The, the, that market is going up because the demand is huge and the supply isn't, isn't out there. We're seeing tremendous open, multiple offers in single-family home purchases. All over the city, all over the county, which is actually pretty incredible.
And, you know, there's also because of COVID nineteen and the type of pandemic it is, for people who are in, who can afford Class A, which is what's getting built on the market rate side, right? So you're getting units that are over three thousand dollars a month for a one-bedroom apartment. That's what it needs to achieve in order to get built. And people who are paying three thousand dollars a month have an option. And I, and again, because of COVID and the type of pandemic it is, people are not necessarily wanting to live in a particular type of dense housing if they can find something less. And so you have very high vacancy rates. So the demand right now for the type of product for Class A is not as strong. But again, it can recover quickly.
So have we, the, the two areas that you have targeted as the higher cost areas, downtown and West San Jose. Do you have any concerns about development being halted in those two marketplaces?
I would just respond by saying, those are, I mean, those are the two areas within the city where we are seeing the most development in general. Those are the areas that have been able to achieve the level of rents necessary to have the development move forward. So, so that's one fact. I, I think it'll just depend, again, the market is, is going to play there as much as it does in other areas to see how strong those rents are, right? I think that, again, the structure is, is really built and designed to have developers think about how they could build some affordable housing on site. So I, I'm just, I'm just really curious and hopeful that it may lead to us having some conversations about doing the combination, you know, having it, you know, ha- if, I mean, according to the way that we are doing our math, it will actually be less expensive for them to provide five percent of the units onsite at a hundred percent AMI and pay the fee than it would be to pay the thirty-four dollars. So, so that's, that's how it's designed to encourage that type of a choice. So, you know, and honestly, in those areas, we have been having those conversations with some of the developers because they're interested and they would like to understand how they could build some affordable housing within their development. So, yeah, so we're just hopeful that those are the conversations that will be led to.
Well, I, it, it's the, the goal is to have affordable housing built. So if there's an incentive to build affordable housing and that's cheaper than buying it out, that's what's really important. So we'll have to see that at work. I do like the timeframes built into, I guess, the mayor's proposal where we're going to take a look at it the first quarter of twenty twenty-four. I think that's important. We, to, to shorten that timeline doesn't make sense because of the pandemic and, and the impact of, of development. And five years, I don't have a strong opinion about that. But I do like, would like to take a look at it in the, in twenty twenty-four to get an idea of what has happened historically. We should have some historical numbers by that. So I, I appreciate your answers to my questions and the presentation was really helpful. It is a very complicated issue and we are all focused on trying to provide more affordable housing and making it an incentive for developers to build rather than buy it out. So thank you very much. That's it.
Okay, I think we lost, did we lose Sam?
Yeah, this is Tony. It looks like we lost Sam.
Okay. Well.
Oh, he just popped back on.
Forgive me. Vice Mayor, my, uh, my device just actually shut down because of lack of power. Are we at a vote already?
I think so. There's no more.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just had a couple of quick questions. Thank you. And I'm sorry for the delay. I just, I'm now on my iPhone because the, my computer ran out of juice. Yeah, I just couple of quick questions. For general about, you know, I know data that was presented by Paul Ring, who I know knows affordable housing very, very well. And with a particular focus on addressing this question, are we really increasing the fee or not? And, you know, I know we've talked about extensively through our team with yours about the fact that this really is just as, as straight a conversion as possible and actually some reduction in, in a sense. That the particular concern that I thought was addressed was around the the countervailing reduction of the park fee for the inclusionary affordable units. And that was something that staff was going to be bringing to council. Is, is that right?
Yes, the Parks Department is bringing that back in early March.
In early March. Okay. So that will be considered soon.
Yeah.
So the, the short answer is we're not increasing the fee.
We are not increasing the fee. The examples that Paul has run, you know, has calculated on far exceed what achievable rents there are in the market. So the calculation was at $4.50. That's not an achievable rent.
Right, okay. And then with regard to this question about the threshold for the number of units, I know this is an issue we have debated often in the past. And I suggested we look at doing five or more for, for sale only. I appreciate that you'd like to see a uniform approach with regard to for-sale versus rental. But clearly for-sale development right now looks awfully good. I, I would imagine the margins are pretty darned high, given the fact that we got median prices at 1.25 million and average sales prices at 1.3. And I guess the question is, why don't we think those developers can pay the fee? And I assume most of them would pay, you know, pay the fee. They wouldn't build the units, of course. They just fee out. So what, what makes us hesitate from saying, hey, if you're building for-sale housing, we see where the market is and it's been there for a while. Pay the fee.
Yeah, I think it's because when we had the discussions, when we went back out to have the discussions on these smaller units, which is what we were directed to do, that the examples of the remnant parcels, the need to remove environmental issues, really increase their costs. Although, you know, we absolutely understand the for-sale side is what's booming right now. But we couldn't really find, you know, the 10 appear to be the sweet spot of where we could get some consensus and agreement on moving forward in that area.
Okay. And is, is there a particular reason why you'd like to see the threshold the same for rental and for sale, other than just, it's easier?
Well, because then we do have, you know, the definition of the rental is you're going to set, you, you create, you're creating, I'm trying to remember the right word for it, the, the condominium structure for it. What we end up having developers who go try to go back and forth, right? So who might claim their one thing and then they turn out to be something else and then it just becomes more challenging that way. However, on the for-sale side, usually if it's five or less, you know, they'll be attached or not attached. They could be townhomes. So.
Yeah. Okay. I, I guess I wanted to raise then with Councilmember Peralas, do you have particular concerns about doing this for for-sale housing? Given the very high revenues that developers are getting in that market right now?
Yeah, I do. And I know that this has had extensive analysis and I personally, for, for years now, I've had conversations. There are a number of these particular infill, smaller lots that are not your traditional development site. So they, they do have a number of other factors as to what makes them more complicated and more costly. And, and in fact, I think the reality for me is just that we haven't seen many of them actually developed. As, as Councilmember Renan S. pointed out, she has a number of those in her district. I, I don't have very many, but the reality is, is that in some other areas of our city where there are these development sites, we're not seeing the development happen. And so I, I think that that's the, you know, I, I'm not the expert here. I, I trusted staff in trying to come up with the fair number. And, and that's why I'm, I'm more comfortable with sticking with, with their guidance on this than, than to move either up or down.
Okay. Well, obviously I'll support the motion because I support the, the staff's recommendation. If there's a supplemental motion anybody's interested in making, I'm certainly interested in exploring this further. I, I don't, you know, responding to Councilmember Collins' question, I, I don't expect developers to be building the fee, building the unit itself, but rather paying the fee than that would enable to have the department to go build with an nonprofit builder somewhere else. The, the question came up about 80 years and I think I am now more confused than ever. So when this issue came up and a couple of items ago, I texted somebody on the planning staff and said, hey, I've never heard ADUs used for the basis of calculating densities or, or housing units. Are they? And, and the answer was no, we don't do that. And the reason is because it all so much depends on context and whether or not somebody's actually gonna rent the unit or not. And if you're particularly in a more affluent neighborhood, then the ADU becomes, you know, a wine cellar, a man cave or something. It doesn't actually end up being used to house anybody. And I guess, and why we, we have a, we'll consider this as affordable housing because I've always understood that we expect the affordable units to be of high quality as the market rate units. And it seems like by definition, at least 90% of the time, ADUs are much, much smaller than the primary unit on the parcel. So you're talking about a 600-unit ADU or 600 square foot or 800 square foot ADU and a, you know, maybe a 1300 square foot home. And it just, it didn't make sense that we would consider that to be equivalent for purposes of counting from inclusionary. And I'm trying to understand why we would say so now.
I think as we've seen other multiple configurations, as it turns out, because there are these multiple ones that Rachel just described where they're clustered in some way as well. And, and that's why I'm saying it, it was impossible for us to answer the question clearly because we'd have to see exactly what this, what it looks like. Cause I'm imagining the same thing you are. How could you possibly have a single-family home and an ADU and try to claim the ADU is the affordable? Because the front owner would never, how would you sell that product? How would I, I'm like, it's beyond my imagination here, but maybe there's something I don't know about in terms of the configuration that we would consider, but you know, it's clearly going to have to make sense.
I get it. All right. Sounds like a rare circumstance. So I'll leave it alone. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. Any other questions from the council? All right, let's vote then on Councilmember Peralas' motion.
Jimenez? Peralas?
Hi.
Owen?
Hi.
Roscoe?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Arenas?
Yes.
Ollie?
Hi.
Behan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, I believe we're on 10.4. That's a general plan amendment for the Martha Gardens specific plan for the site A or two South First Street. And I believe there's a presentation.
Yes, Mayor, we have a short presentation. I'll share. So this mixed-use project is located at South First Street and East Virginia Street. And the site is approximately 1.2 acres in size. There are actually three components to this proposal. First is a general plan, land use change. Secondly, is a text amendment to the Martha Garden, Martha Garden specific plan. And then finally, a planned development zoning to allow up to 246 residential uses. This slide shows the land use change request from the applicant from mixed-use commercial and mixed-use neighborhood to the transit residential land use designation. The project includes two text amendments to the Martha Garden specific plan. The first one is an increased height up to 80 feet on the subject site with an additional 10 feet for architectural projections. And then the second change reduces the setback along East Virginia Street to zero feet. The applicant has agreed to satisfy the inclusionary housing ordinance by building 15% onsite affordable housing. That includes 9% of the units at 80% AMI and 6% of units at 50% AMI. The planned development rezoning is for up to 249 units. So this computes to a total of 37 income restricted units and 212 market rate housing units. A community meeting was held for the project on November 2nd of last year. Some of the concerns raised by those participated, including sufficient parking for the project, a transition of, of heights to adjacent areas. And then a concern about the amount of affordable housing that's in the neighborhood. The planning commission heard the item at its meeting on January 27th and voted to recommend that the city council approve the project. I do want to acknowledge the memorandum from Councilmember Peralas recommending that the applicant develop the project as a market rate project or with certain affordability levels that have been detailed in his memo. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Rose. Okay, let's go to, I believe, the applicant. And Mr. Shane Hour? Sorry, Mr. Shane Hour?
All right. Took a while for the unmute button to come up. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, good evening or good night. Mayor Licardo, members of the council. My name's Eric Shane Hour. I represent the D'Amico family on this application. We just want to thank the city staff, the planning commission and Councilmember Peralas for their recommendation of approval for our project. All we're really doing today is taking a residential site in the Martha Gardens plan and bringing it up to modern development standards. Since the Martha Gardens plan was approved 17 years ago, it really is, the heights in the plan are really out of date. So that's what's happening and it will allow us to, to build a mixed-income, mixed-use residential building on a vacant automotive tire shop. So it'll be a great, you know, urban addition to the neighborhood. And, uh, and as I mentioned, we are, the goal of the development is to build a mixed-income development in a fashion that is articulated in Councilmember Peralas's office. So we would achieve those range of affordability or up to a market rate project. So that's the intent of the development. So we would hope the project's worthy of your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Shane Hour. Let's go to the members of the community. I believe it's Mr. Soto at 8357.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm completely disillusioned. And I really need to come to the terms that I'm going to die poor. And I'm going to die suffering in my city. Every single one of you had an opportunity to, uh, to protect us. And now I have to come to terms with the fact that I'm going to die poor. Take it easy.
Brian Darby?
You're not poor, sir. What you've offered to this community has been great and I want to let you know, I appreciate it. I, I do appreciate the affordable housing. And Mr. Schreitauer, the service you bring to our, our city, I appreciate it. Even though at times I'm sure I frustrated you and you frustrated me. It's not easy. And as that gentleman shared before, there's times that we just feel you just, we can only do the best we can. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Peralas?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And I'll echo Brian's comments. And I think in regards to Paul Soto and I think he might have, Paul, I think you might have misunderstood some of the context of the last item. Happy to, to fill you in in the future if you're interested. In regards to this item, I want to thank staff for all your work. Specifically, both planning and, planning and housing staff for working with my team. I'm trying to figure out the issues surrounding affordability on this property. And this is a rarity. Actually, the first time I, I have done this with a, a project where you can achieve some affordability and I'm actually asking to go for higher levels of affordability rather than lower all, all the way up to market rate. And I'll, I'll get into some of the context of that, but that's, that's also detailed in my memo. These neighborhoods around Martha's Gardens, Guadalupe, Washington, Spartan Keys, they have historically welcomed in affordable housing units in their community. And in fact, they were the first community, Spartan Keys Neighborhood Association, welcomed in Second Street Studios, the first permanent supportive housing development in our city. And embraced that project. Not necessarily out the gate, took, took a lot of effort, but ultimately ended up embracing it and, and have welcomed them in. If you look at the chart in my memo pulled from the housing website, there are 544 affordable housing units within just a half-mile radius of, of this project site here. And as Planted, Planning pointed out, that was one of the concerns heard from the community and it's something I've been hearing for, for years. And, and unfortunately, there's relevancy to, to that concern. As my colleagues know that have been working with me for, for my full term here, you know, I'm not against having affordable housing projects and certainly wouldn't be against this one. But I have heard from the community and their desire to achieve more of a balance within their neighborhood. And the only way to do that is, is in regards to more mixed income. Actually, back to the last item, we were just talking about inclusionary, right? Achieving these mixed income communities. And unfortunately, every development proposal since I've been in office, coming into this neighborhood has been from deep levels of affordability, like permanent supportive housing to any other affordable project. We have not had one market rate project in this community. And it is oversaturated. And this is this particular neighborhood and a couple others in my district that I represent are the reason why I have been advocating for years on the siding policy. Because we, we need to, we need to better integrate and, and bring balance to our neighborhoods. Because we need to, we need to better integrate and bring balance to our neighborhoods and not subject particular neighborhoods to only affordable housing, especially deep affordable housing. And so I wanted to ensure that the neighborhood understood some of the background here on what we did. And our office has requested that the applicant work to set affordability levels that were within reason. They did come up with the prescribed levels that are included in my memo. And however, there are certain legal constraints that prevent us, the city, from enforcing or conditioning these levels. And so I did want to just ask for clarification, either Rosalyn or Nora. Wanted to ask if you could explain why the city cannot condition these affordability requirements in either the PD zoning or even in the housing requirements? This is a question that my community members are interested in knowing.
And Councilmember, in terms of your question, are these, I wasn't sure from your memo, are these units part of an existing, in the existing inclusionary ordinance?
No, so this is, this is just a PD zoning or the general plan text amendment. And within the PD zoning, we were hoping to include some conditions on affordability, but we are not legally allowed to do so. And I, you know, for my community members that have been asking of this, essentially asking that we do more to ensure there are mixed income levels. They're wondering why we can't do that and why we would potentially have to be subject to, you know, a project that came in at extremely deep levels of affordability and not not require them through PD zoning or housing requirements to actually, you know, go higher in their affordability.
Well, my understanding on that is you can, we can have the discussions with a developer. And if there is a willingness on the part of the developer, then that, then that can occur.
But we can't, we can't require it, though, is what I'm asking.
Yes, that would be correct, but there, but there can always be the discussion with the developer.
And we've done, we've done that.
If you will, yeah.
Yeah, no, believe me, and Eric Shane Howard will attest, and so will Planning. That's what we've done here is gotten to a point where we've come to an agreement. But essentially, it had to be an agreement. It could not be a requirement.
Correct.
Okay. And then, and I don't, I don't need to ask Eric to come up because he already mentioned it in his comments. But thank you, Eric, for stating that you would be willing to commit to those affordability levels. Thank you for working with us as well on this project. I agree, this is a great development opportunity site, certainly in need of the updates. As there's, you know, there's opportunity for increased heights, as you pointed out, and to be able to achieve more units on the site. But I do respect that you and the applicant have understood why this community is looking to have actually a better mixed income project. And so with that, I will ask that we approve my memo.
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Peralas, second, Councilmember Arenas. Are there questions or comments? I had a question for Rosalyn. Rosalyn, the fact that this project is being approved today, isn't that what enables under SB three thirty for us to have, for the council to have approved what the state law would regard as a down zoning on the Cambriana project?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. So in order for us to comply with the provisions of SB three thirty, if the council decreases residential capacity on a project in one part of the city, we have, the council also has to take an action to increase residential capacity on another project to make up that difference. So you are correct.
Okay. I certainly support this and I look forward to seeing a good project at the site. Since I used to represent District Three, I'm very familiar with neighborhood concerns because we have built a lot of affordable housing in Spartan Keys and Martha Gardens area. I know it's, you know, it's, you know, working class neighborhood. And they're, they are, they feel frustrated because we have, you know, continued to go there. And I just want us all to have our eyes wide open that we approved a project at much lower density with much less affordability in a much more affluent area today that was only enabled because we're able to impose much greater density in a neighborhood that has clearly borne its share responsibility for building affordable housing. And I just think we need to have our eyes wide open about what we're all doing collectively here. I'm going to support this project, but I am troubled by this pattern. Any other comments or questions? All right, let's vote on motion.
Menas?
Yes.
Peralas?
Hi.
One?
Roscoe? Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Arenas?
Yes.
Oli?
Hi.
Mahan?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Ricardo?
Hi. All right, we now have time for open forum, I believe. Brian Darby?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Five hundred thousand people. President Biden brought up that that was more than passed in the actual battles of World War One, say, the Battle of the Somme. World War Two, the Battle of the Ardennes, Battle of the Bulge, my father fought there. He never really did talk about that. And he also was involved in liberating some of those camps. That also affected him. But Colonel Chamberlain at Little Round Top was able to fix bayonets and charge an enemy. COVID nineteen, you can't charge or fix bayonets and five hundred thousand people died. There is a difference. And President Biden was right to say what he said. Thank you.
Thank you. Shani?
Thank you, Mayor Liccardo. On Thursday, you will be faced with really hard choices between today's crisis and your aspirations for the next year and beyond. And there are a lot of really good and important priorities on your list and work of policies and your work plan. One thing that does not belong anywhere there is the new signs and billboards. And I wanted to thank Raul Peralas for his memo asking to stop that work immediately and not waste any more time on it. And to support District Six Urban Greening Implementation Plan. The reason to stop the signs is because, not only because it's extremely unpopular, but because electronic signs create an unnecessary light, lighting of the night, which impacts our health and the health of the ecosystems. And really appreciate the memo looking to stop it and hope you all support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Beekman. I'm sorry, Blair Beekman. You're here so often, calling you council member now.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Hopefully I can have enough time to finish this, this short speech. An interesting headline in this week's Mercury News describes the SJPD Neighborhood Association president in favor of Dave Tindall and Heather Randall. Sadly, this seems as about as insider as it can get. I think it is down to Deputy Chief Mata and the Assistant Chief of Pittsburgh as they can best work towards the ideas of equity and reimagine. I think Deputy Mata would have a good way with kids, create a good feeling among the east side residents, and honestly work to address an SJPD insider network to help invite a transformative process most can agree with. Am I missing something about Deputy Mata? Why is there not more open support for him? Am I misjudging how much Deputy Mata may already be too much a part of a SJPD insider himself to really offer change? Or is our progressive community simply misjudging how Deputy Mata may be the person with a temperament, patience, and progressive ideas and how to address a very serious SJPD insider problem? And how to lessen easy to understand good terms decades of militaristic policing practices?
Thank you, Mr. Beekman. All right, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.